All right, well, good evening and welcome to the October 10th Planning Commission meeting. So, Chris, are you going to do call order?
I'll try.
Okay.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Hamilton?
Here.
Member Nemra?
Here.
Member Melton?
Here.
Member Strauss?
Here.
Member Thorson?
President.
Member Miranda?
Here.
Member Lee?
Here.
And Chair Olson?
Here, thank you. I get the right agenda. So, next we have approval of the meeting agenda. Any edits, changes? Sorry, what?
Yes, I do have one change. Under special recognitions and presentations, we were going to have City Manager Neil to talk about our minutes. He can't make it this evening, so we'll put that on your next agenda.
Okay.
So, I would just ask that that be removed from the agenda.
Okay.
I move approval of the minutes as amended.
Second.
Agenda, we're on the agenda. You try.
You said you were going to try.
I know, you're going too fast, too fast, man. Because there was a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we're on to the meeting minutes from September 26th. Are there any edits for that, for those minutes? No? Okay.
Motion to approve the minutes as submitted in the staff report.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Great, so we're going to jump right into the public hearings. We have one, two, three, four, five of them. And the first one is going to be a variance request at 4712 Anaway Drive for first-floor height and no basement for a new home.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The subject property is not on Halifax, we're going to go to Anaway, pardon me. So, this is a variance request for first-floor height for a new home with no basement, and it's located at 4712 Anaway Drive. The subject property is highlighted in red, it is on the west side of Anaway. It backs up to the Interlock and Golf Club. It consists of about 50, a little over 50,000 square feet. Currently, there's a Rambler on the property with an attached garage. It is the low point between the two homes on either side. There's a pool in the backyard. This is a photograph from assessing of what the current home looks like. Also, a footprint drawing indicating the existing conditions. This is showing sort of a panoramic view of the house. They tried to get the homes on either side, it's a very large lot, so it is difficult to get that view. Here is a current survey of the property with the existing house indicated. The areas that are highlighted in yellow indicate the existing first floor of the property is at 896.9, the existing basement is at 888.3. The floodplain elevation for the property, this property is in the flood zone, it's in a local flood zone designation. The existing floodplain elevation is at 893.9. The ordinance requires that you add two feet onto the floodplain elevation for your basement floor. So, the basement floor has to be at an elevation no lower than 895.9. And if you go back to look at the existing first floor, that's at 896.9. So, the grade that's existing around the property right now, and as I said previously, it is a low point between the homes on either side, the exterior grade that's outside of the existing home is at the elevation where the basement should be, or where they should have their basement. Now, they are asking for a variance from our basement requirement, the ordinance requires that you have at least a 50 percent basement below your home, that's excluding any garage area. And in order for them to maintain the first-floor elevation at a reasonable level and not have to elevate the house, you know, way up beyond where things are currently, they've decided to forego and ask for a variance from the basement requirement. And then, they will need, or they are asking for a variance for one foot above the existing first, or two feet above the existing first floor, the ordinance allows a one-foot increase. This is the footprint of the proposed home. It does meet all of the other requirements in terms of setback, height, coverage. This is the tree replacement, tree removal plan, pardon me. This would be the new front elevation of the home. It is a two-story home, there are two sections of the home that have second-floor area underneath the roof line. Again, the existing home, you can't really tell from this photograph, it's at a low point between the two. And then, the new home that would be raised up with the first floor, two feet above the existing first floor, which actually is lower than the first floor of the homes on either side. So, even with that two-foot increase on the first floor, they're still going to be lower than both of the homes on either side of them. This sort of illustrates that the current elevation is the red, or where the house would be, and then the green is the neighboring elevation on either side. So, they're still going to be lower than that. And again, they were trying to illustrate that the neighboring properties are at a higher elevation with the red line between the two. This gives you another sort of bird's-eye view of how the home will fit within the lot. It does meet all of the other setback requirements, it lines up with the home's average on either side, it does maintain the side yard setbacks, and is within the lot coverage requirements. And these are some various, this is the first-floor plan, no basement. And then, there's two smaller second-floor areas, one is an upper lounge, and then some more bedroom area. And then, here are some photos of the home at different angles. So, the request before you is the first-floor elevation that will be one foot beyond, one foot beyond the one foot that's allowed per ordinance, as well as forgiveness from the basement requirement, which it is certainly a goal of the city and certainly a goal of the Watershed Districts for properties that are currently non-conforming, which this one is, given that the basement is much lower than it should be. It is a goal of the city to get them elevated and outside of the flood zone and to minimize that risk. Regarding grading and drainage, the environmental engineer has reviewed the application and submitted comments that were attached to your staff report. The proposed stormwater management plan does not propose any additional drainage to neighboring or private properties, and the public infrastructure on Anaway Drive has capacity to accept the runoff. The site is located in the local 1 percent floodplain, the applicant has proposed to fill in, the floodplain is allowed by city code with an equal amount of cut on the site, and the applicant is using the cut from a rear yard infiltration feature to satisfy that cut requirement. So, the primary issue is, does the proposed new home meet the criteria for approval for variance? Staff does believe the proposal meets the criteria for a variance, the proposal is permitted in the R-1 district. It will be a reconstructed dwelling unit that meets all of the requirements with the exception of the basement requirement. However, in order for them to provide a basement, it would be at literally the same elevation as the existing grade outside of the house currently. The variance allows the new home to be elevated out of the flood zone with no basement and maintain a first-floor height at 898.9, which is similar to the first-floor heights provided by the neighbor to the north, which is at 899.9, slightly higher, and the first-floor elevation of the house to the south, which is at 900.5. So, both homes on either side are still starting at a higher elevation than what the applicant is proposing. And the new first-floor height of the proposed home on the subject site will be lower and be adequate to provide flood protection. The proposed home design does fit within the character of the neighborhood, there was an earlier slide showing how it would fit into the lot, and showing the homes on either side. Staff does recommend approval of the variance as requested, subject to the findings that I listed previously. However, should be in conformance with the following plans that were date stamped on September 18th, 2018, and building plans and elevations dated the same, and with compliance with the conditions and comments listed in the environmental engineer's memo. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Chris. Are there questions for Chris? Commissioner Thorsen?
Yeah, Chris, maybe, you probably have told us, what's the, what's the origins of the basement requirement? Is it, obviously, this isn't a typical house, it can't be for the square footage.
Well, I think everybody in Minnesota expects to have a basement, and also for storm protection, somewhere to go in order, it's an ordinance that's been in the books and on the books for a very long time. I can't tell you exactly why it's in there, but, and it is up for discussion, it's on our work plan to take a look at whether we feel that is something that we want to keep.
Okay, so there's, yeah, there's no really, I know, you need something to bring utilities into a building and stuff like that, but, you know, that can all be designed for.
Yeah, I think we have designed, we've advanced to the point where we wouldn't necessarily need a basement.
And there's no, the floodplain issue, what's flooding, is just ground, water accumulating from like a storm event, or is that?
It's a localized flood area, so it's-
So, it's just lower behind all the homes, and then it's just water builds up if, okay, but there's no, there's no river or anything going?
No, no.
Okay, thanks.
Questions for Chris? Commissioner Nemra?
Thanks, Chris. So, it looks like there would be 14 trees that will be removed, and I, obviously, I'm sure that it's gone through the city and for compliance with the ordinance. Is it possible to get explanation, though, of how that complies? Or how, is there someone here that could explain that?
I believe that the applicant can address any future landscaping. You can take down any tree, there is a replacement requirement for those trees that are out of a specific circumference. They were showing some renderings that showed landscaping, so I'm sure they do have some plans for that.
Thanks.
Commissioner Lee?
What, Chris, what's the square footage of the new house?
Well, I have a building footprint square footage, but I don't know what the actual-
Oh, you don't know, okay. Is that something typically that the building department requires?
The square footage of the house?
Of the new plans, so this is a tear-down, so would they look at that?
They may have to look at it in terms of some of the heat calculations, but I guess from a zoning ordinance standpoint, we don't have a floor area ratio, and you wouldn't consider the garage area as part of that, so it's not anything that zoning would look at or calculate. We look at the amount of structure coverage, so that is on the survey, and they do comply with that. So, I can't answer the question as to how many, how large of a-
And right now, the requirement for city v. Dyna is any resident, any single-family resident, does not require certified or stamped drawings by an architect, is that right? Or does it depend on square footage? Smaller houses don't, larger ones do? Do you know?
As far as what's required for a building permit application?
Yes.
I'm not aware that there is a requirement for it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris. And so is the applicant here, would they like to speak? You don't have to, but if you're here, you're welcome to. I think we did have some questions on the trees.
Any questions?
I think, well, I think there was a question about the removal of trees, that would be good to hear, thanks. And you can just go and just name and address, yeah, and talk until it turns red, but you don't have to.
Tom Rousher, Rousher &amp; Associates, and I'm working on a project on 4712 Anaway. The tree question, a lot of the trees are very, very old and quite dangerous, especially in the building pad, so we're taking those down. The plans right now don't really reflect an actual landscape plan, but I know with the client that we work with and are working with, there'll be more trees on that lot than there were when we started, so.
Yeah, that makes sense, it's such a lovely house, I assume that there's probably going to be equivalent landscaping. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, do you happen to know the square footage of the house?
I believe the overall first floor itself is 6,000 square feet.
Is there a second, there is a second floor?
There are a couple of secondary areas. I think overall, it's right under 8,000 square feet of the home.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So, this is also a public hearing, is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak? See none? Harry Nun?
Motion for those in the public hearing?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Bringing it back to the Planning Commission, any other comments, questions? Commissioner Bennett?
Just a quick comment, incredible proposal. I think the practical difficulty that's relieved here is pretty obvious and one that I fully support in twofold, one, raising the elevation up and excluding the basement and what that does compared to the surrounding lots, I think they're, I really thank them for some good imagery, it helped tell the story, having the nice graphic that shows here's neighboring main floor lines, as well as the green and red show the separation, because we've seen alternatives come before us of people mounting up a mountain to include a basement, and it just doesn't fit the character. I think what this does is very responsible and alleviates flood concerns for future residents.
Any other comments? Commissioner Lee?
I think that the drawings were very helpful, I've noticed that we've tried to have some things where, to see, to be able to see what's happening with the adjacent neighbors, and it is a very large property, so I thought that that at least made a lot of sense to see it in that light.
I wonder if there's any concern, I mean, so the first floor is going to be where a basement would normally be required, and, you know, talking about climate change and 50-year floods and 100-year floods, I mean, normally, it would be your basement that flooded, not your first floor. So, I wonder if there's any concern, or the city thought about anything about, you know, it's going to be their first floor that's going to flood now if it comes above that thing. I mean, it's not, I mean, I guess it's their concern, not ours, but, just something to think about.
Well, it is out of the floodplain, so if they had put a basement, that would probably be even a little bit lower, so I think the adjacent homes, their first floors are at more or less that level. So, they are, well, according to the, you know, the calculations, are well above the floodplain area.
Commissioner Bennett?
I would say maybe not on this project, but would be interesting on other ones, that just showing the statistic of what that free board allows, what type of storm protection it brings it from, you know, if that floodplain elevation's a 10, 50-year storm, but that two, three feet of free board brings it to a 500-year storm or something, might be helpful for us to see to make a decision off of supporting us, especially the landowners, too.
Yeah, so, thank you for all the comments. I will move to approve subject to the staff memo, the conditions listed.
There a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Was there discussion? Did you have discussions? All right, there you go, it got passed. Enjoy.
Now leave here while you can.
So, I find my agenda. All right, so next on the agenda is another variance request for a front yard setback at 5100 Skyline Drive. Chris?
Subject property is located at 5100 Skyline Drive, it's corner lot, located in the southwest corner of Skyline Drive cul-de-sac and Skyline Drive. What you'll notice in this aerial photograph is that there is a house on the subject lot that isn't there anymore, and there is a house on the vacant lot that's behind it that isn't there in the picture that's showing. And I point that out because not so long ago, these were the existing conditions, and they were the existing conditions, well, since the home that's on the subject property was built. The property behind it had been a vacant lot since the time it was platted, it was held as a vacant lot, and never developed. What that does to a corner lot, though, is that this subject lot, their front yard setback is along Skyline Drive, and then the side street setback is along Skyline Drive cul-de-sac. And a side street setback is 15 feet for living space, 20 feet for garage opening, although this house actually is just, was just a little bit closer than 20 feet with their garage opening, I think it's like, it was 18 and a half feet. But it was in near compliance for our current code. I point that out because once a house is built on this vacant lot, that becomes their front yard, and therefore, it sets up the requirement for setback along Skyline Drive cul-de-sac for the subject property. So, now that there's a home that was built behind it, on the vacant lot, they are now subjected to the average of the homes along Skyline Drive cul-de-sac, or they'd have to match that neighbor directly behind them. The average of these two homes is actually a little bit less, it's now 44 feet instead of 45 feet with the house that's been built. But they're moving from a building pad area that had a setback of a little over 18 feet, now having to back up any opportunity to at least 44 feet from that north lot line. So, there's a closer look at the old home that had been there, this is what they would like to build. Currently, the lot is vacant, it's been vacant for quite some time. It's a one-story house, they would have the garage in the south end. This is the north elevation of the home and the east elevation. This, again, is the survey of that old home, it's not showing the house that's directly behind it. This is a tree plan, the trees that have been removed and the ones that remain, they will also have to have a tree replacement plan when they apply for a building permit application. This gives you an idea now of what they are proposing in terms of, the proposed building footprint is outlined in the dark black line, the blue box is the old home, and then the red-lined area is the actual opportunity or buildable area of the lot. And so, their setback had been at 18.6 feet, now they have to back it up to at least 44 feet, so they've lost quite a bit of opportunity of, you know, what had been over all the years of being able to have a 15-foot setback or a 20-foot setback for a garage opening. So, this shows you that new home that was built next door in conjunction with the house that they are proposing. They meet all of the other setback requirements, the height requirement, the coverage requirement. The two variants that they are requesting are for the patio, the corner of the patio would be about 22 feet away from the cul-de-sac lot line to the north, and again, the previous structure was at 18.6, so even the patio area is going to be further back, and then the back corner of the house would be a little over 27 feet away. This is a little busier version of that, just showing that cross-hatched area, which is their actual opportunity now for developing the site, and a stormwater management plan that's been submitted for it. This, then, is the proposed house, it is a one-story house. They're trying to give you an idea of what the elevation looks like in conjunction with the home next door. They couldn't really get a rendering of the side with the home behind it, it is on the same side of the street, but it's so far away, and it's also behind the house, so they really had no way of showing how those two would interact. So, this is then that north elevation that would be facing the cul-de-sac. The basement floor plan, the main floor floor plan, and again, the elevations. So, the variance's request is to allow the new home to be closer to that north lot line than what previously would be allowed. Staff does support the request, given that there is hardship based upon, or actually challenges based upon, the fact that previously, they had much more building opportunity than they currently have. The stormwater management plan was reviewed by the engineering department, there's a memo that was attached to your reports. Staff does support the request based on the plans presented, and I will stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Are there questions for Chris? Commissioner Thorson?
The previous home, or the, I guess, existing foundation, where did the driveway access the house, please?
Off the cul-de-sac, so it was kind of a, I believe it was kind of a tuck-under garage. I don't know, because the assessing photos are gone, but as I recall from back in the day.
In the proposal, then, it won't be, the driveway will be off the-
It will be off of Skyline, off the south side. So, it'll be a little different.
So, if I understand Dyna regulations correctly, if you have a house, existing house, and your next-door neighbor tears down their house and builds it at the very, very back of their lot, that affects, if you tear down your house and rebuild it, that affects where your front, where your setback is?
Yes.
Okay.
That's exactly what has happened on this property.
Right, that's what's happening, okay, so it's, okay, and no grandfathering, or?
No. Once it's a vacant lot, it's a vacant lot, and it's subjected to our current requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Nappa?
If this property were developed in accordance with the setback, would that be a difficult thing to do?
It would be more difficult than, I mean, historically, they've always had a closer setback to the north lot line, I think anybody would presume that you would have that same opportunity, that, you know, you'd have some inherent right to actually enjoy the same amount of property. It's a significant amount, going from 18 and 18 and a half foot setback to 44 foot setback. So, it certainly would, it does impact the design, and it does push it all south.
And if it got pushed back, would there be things like more trees would need to be removed? A lot of times, when you get pushed back because of these other houses moving, you're going back into where people have landscaped, or lots have been landscaped.
Possibly, and, you know, you're going to offset it then, too, you're going to be pushing it much further to the south. You're going to be pushing it much further to the south, instead of centering it on the lot.
So with the setback, it allows it to center it on the lot better?
It would be more centered, yes, and be more, closer to the north lot line, similar to what was previously there.
And that's, you know, generally more typical, right? More centered on the lot.
If the house behind it, to the west, hadn't been built, or if they would have built, you know, maybe next year, this wouldn't be an issue, or in front of you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Alright, so we have an opportunity for the applicant to come and speak if they'd like. Again, just state your name and address, that'd be great.
Nate Wissing, 4235 Grimes Avenue. And I'm here on behalf of Ty and Mary Eslick, who are my clients, who purchased the property at 5100 Skyline. Thank you, Commissioner, for hearing our request for the variance. I just had a couple of quick points to add, and thanks for the staff for their report. The two things that I would note, because they kind of came up in questions, number one is, as it relates to the site plan drawing, and I'm just going to use the stormwater management drawing. One thing to note is that, on the property, the way the cul-de-sac works here, there actually is a right-of-way, so the area that I'm highlighting, painting is the right-of-way. And that's an additional, so the area from here to the corner of the house is actually just over 31 feet. When you add the right-of-way, it actually gets it over to closer than 40 feet in that area. So, in terms of the setback, relative to what would be required under the 45-foot? Or 44-foot, here, you're almost getting that with the way the house is designed. So we're asking, really, the compression here due to the cul-de-sac is what's driving that. And then, the second thing is, in terms of the footprint and how we design the house, this is the developable area of the lot. And the challenge with the developable area of the lot, in terms of doing an empty nester floor plan, so, my client's been a resident of Edina for 43 years, and they wanted to build a home where they could continue to live in, and live in a one-level living situation. The challenge with building a house that has a main floor master in it, is that you really get a difficult, it's almost impossible to utilize the lot the way the lot should be used. You've got a seven-foot slope from basically this side of the lot to this side of the lot. And so when you're working with a tighter footprint like this, you lose almost 40% or just over 40% with between these two setbacks. We're asking for a pretty minimal change here in order to get this to work out, but it really accommodates the topography of the lot, as well as kind of the overall conditions that are inherent in the property as a result of the way that it's configured. So, those are the two points. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the applicant? No? Okay, great, thank you. So this is also a public hearing, is there anyone who'd like to speak towards the variance? Aye.
I'll wait for a green light to come on. I can just go ahead. My name is Jay Rokel, I live at 5020 Skyline Drive. I'm the homeowner to the west that built the new house that doesn't show up on the overhead plans, or the overhead picture. I'm also the one that demoed the house on 5100. I had, at one time, owned both lots. I chose to build on the back lot, and I chose to tear down that house. So it was my doing that caused this, justification here of which house came first, and causing the setback issue that is being addressed tonight. My wife Lynn and I are in full support of the Eslicks' request. We believe it will be a nice addition to our neighborhood, and we have no issues at all with their request. We think it's a nice-looking house, and we're excited to have them as new neighbors.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, motion?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. So bringing it back to the planning commissioner, are there comments? I'll look down at the side, any over here? No? Commissioner, oh, your point. I'll go look at this side. Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, you know, this is just an example of a coincidence of timing and history for why this is before us, and that's a practical difficulty just summed up right there. Everything about this presentation, at least according to me, is exactly what we'd want to see. Really thorough documentation, great drawings, great neighbor support, and a great presentation in general, and everything about it makes sense. Looks like it'll be a good addition to the neighborhood, and trying to fit it into what the setbacks would allow would, I think, put it, put the, push the burden on to the next homeowner, too. And what this does is the right answer.
Commissioner Strauss?
Yeah, just a quick comment. Mr. Eslick spoke for the property. Yeah, that was a very good presentation showing, and it's apparent, you know, that you put a lot of thought and made every effort to make it work on this site, so I thought it was a well-prepared presentation. Thank you.
Commissioner Lee?
I think my only concern, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Bennett, I agree with everything he said there. I think it makes a difference when you have professionals prepare the drawings and take a look at the site. One, I mean, compare that to the previous one we just looked at, I think when we start hitting upwards of 5,000, 6,000, 7,000 square feet, there's a lot of factors that are coming into play now with the environmental issues, sustainability. I'm always on the side of using professionals to be involved for the design process right from the day one. My only concern would have been the neighbor, who is, you know, having to abut closely at the closest point, so since he spoke tonight, and he is, he is the former landowner, that seems to kind of wrap up my only concern. So I think it was a very good, as Commissioner Bennett said, a very good way of documenting it, and made it very clear.
Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, I agree. I think the idea behind the setback rule is that you want the house to fit into the neighborhood, and fit into the houses next to it, and I think it does that very well.
Commissioner Nemiroff?
Yeah, I agree, I mean, these are attractive plans. One thing I noted in one of the surveys is that the impervious surface coverage on the lot, even though this is a one-level house, and it's, you know, attractively designed, it says that the total impervious surface, looks like it says it's 11% of the lot, and I, is that correct to you?
The total impervious surface, I believe it is under 25%. So it's, I think it's 24.9.
Okay, oh.
So I don't know where the 11%, it might, I'd have to look exactly what that refers to.
I just found that was an appealing number. If it's even 24.9 for a one-level, and, you know, that's just something to call out. I appreciate that.
I move approval of variance, subject to the conditions and findings outlined in the staff memo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Post? None? Congratulations. Enjoy. So we have a third variance tonight, and that is for 5420 Halifax Lane. Emily will be presenting.
Tonight, the applicant is requesting to increase the first-floor elevation 4.7 feet higher than the current home's first-floor elevation in order to construct a new home at 5420 Halifax Lane. 5420 Halifax Lane is approximately 26,000 square feet, and is located on the west side of Halifax Lane, east of Minnehaha Creek, and is located within the flood plain. The city of Edina's engineering standards require that the basement elevation of a new home be two feet higher than the FEMA flood base elevation. The requirement for increased height in basement elevations impacts the ability for the project to conform to the city's first-floor height requirement of one foot. The existing home is a rambler, and was built in 1958, prior to the FEMA flood plain study, which was in 1979. Current home at 5420 Halifax has a first-floor elevation of 869.8 feet. The established flood elevation is 861.9. The requirement for the basement would then leave the basement elevate, or the proposed basement elevation at 863.9. The proposed first-floor elevation is to be at 874.5, which then leaves a finished basement ceiling elevation of 8 feet 10 inches. The environmental engineer has reviewed the application and has submitted comments in their attached memo. Drainage will be directed to either Halifax Lane in the front of the property, or to the rear to the property into Minnehaha Creek, and the applicant is proposing to use graded swales to control that runoff in those directions. Here is the proposed elevations of the home here at 5420 Halifax. And then, there, this is the elevations to run to scale of the homes on either side. Staff believes that the proposal meets the criteria for a variance to allow the first-floor elevation 4.7 feet higher than the existing home. The proposed use is permitted in the R1 zoning district, and complies with all of their zoning standards, with the exception of the first-floor elevation. The variance allows the new home to be elevated out of the flood zone and while maintaining all other zoning requirements, and the proposed home design project fits the character of the neighborhood in height, scale, and mass. The applicant had initially considered requesting an overall height variance, and has since conformed to the height requirement, so in this rendering, the bottom is what was initially submitted, where they would be required to request an overall height variance, and they came back with a lower roof pitch to conform to that height requirement. One thing I also wanted to point out is, the address might look a little familiar. The planning commission recently approved a variance, a first-floor height elevation variance, to the property to the south, at 5428 Halifax Lane, so this is the proposed elevation of the home at 5420 Halifax in the middle. 5416 Halifax Lane is the house to the right, and then 5428 is the house to the left or to the south, and this elevation below that is what was approved with the variance that was seen in August. So tonight, staff recommends approval of the variance as requested, subject to the findings listed in the staff report above, and also the conditions listed in the staff report.
Thanks, Emily. Are there any questions for Emily? Commissioner Strauss?
Yes, yes, Emily, the slide you have up, that's the one. So, maybe, so the house on the left?
Yes.
I mean, that's current, so that's current situation, has that been?
Current situation.
Yeah, right.
Yep.
Okay, okay. Go back one more, where you were showing that one. So...
The rendering?
So the top one is the, and that reflects existing, the existing house to the south.
Yep, not including what was approved with the variance that was approved late August.
Right. So, when that construction is completed, then basically that, there are going to be three very similarly?
Yes, this is the home that will be located to the south.
Okay, okay. I thought that was all familiar. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lee?
I'm sorry, I missed that. Did you say that they made changes to the drawing to lower the roof height?
Yep, your drawings are correct. They initially came in, this was just to show, they initially came in, it's just to show scale. The applicant initially came in with requesting an overall height variance as well, but had decided against that, but they included this rendering in your application packet to show that they reduced the overall height to conform more with the neighborhood.
Okay, so I'm not seeing a dimension here that says what the height. So you are measuring from the front door, is that correct?
The existing, the average existing grade.
Okay, and to which peak?
The highest peak.
The highest peak, which would be that, the second to the left, second to the right peak? No? That one, right there? And you have, what's the dimension of that?
I have to grab here.
I'm asking because it just, it looks very high to me.
The applicant is also here tonight, so he can answer specific questions to that as well.
Well, in any case, the city standard is 36 feet? Wait, I don't see it on the staff report. Typically, we have the setbacks laid out, as well as the city standard for building height, and the actual height of this structure. I do not see it on the compliance table.
The plans reflect 37 feet.
How much?
37.
37 feet? And is that the maximum height for all of Edina? 37 feet to the top of the ridge?
It's based off of the lot width as well. So you can go higher, the wider the lot you have, you can go higher.
Well, this is not a very wide lot, though. That, I doubt if it had that. Looks pretty tight to me. Did it have that factored in?
Yes, it did.
It had a bonus for?
Yes, it's a quarter. Yeah, so it's a quarter of a foot for every...
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's a quarter of a, quarter foot for every foot over 75. A quarter? Sorry, can you?
The height is one, you can add, it's 35 feet for lots that are greater than 75 feet in width, and then you can add one inch of additional height for each foot that the lot width exceeds 75 feet, and it's a 100-foot wide lot, so 37. Alright, so 37 feet is the height of, 37 feet, six inches, okay, is permitted, and you are showing 37, or they have indicated they will build it at 37 feet.
So yes, the overall height of the structure is 37 feet, one inch.
Okay, that would be helpful to have that on the drawings, in the staff report.
Okay.
Or sometimes it's shown on the drawings themselves from the applicant, but in this case, it was kind of hard to find. Did you say that you do feel, staff does feel, that that's in character and in scale with the rest of the neighborhood?
Yes.
And can you tell me more about that, that thinking?
The overall height complies with the zoning requirements, and then with, there's other two-story homes within the general vicinity.
Two-story, yeah, that's true, but the height, granted that that is the height, I'm not questioning the height, you've said that, but there are ways to design this so that the height is not overly, overbearing. Lot of peaks, lot of high ridges, that results in high mass, lot of mass. I don't see a similar massing on the surrounding homes, but, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks. Is the applicant here? Come on up.
I'm with Gania Homes.
Yeah, you have to.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioner, my name is Rick Packer, I'm with Gania Homes. I'm their land manager, and I was asked to come to the meeting this evening, they wanted somebody friendly, I guess, to, I don't even know our client, that's not the end of the business that I work in, so, okay. He might be able to answer more detailed questions about why he designed the house that way, but I think what's been pointed out is that, you know, we need to get the basement out of the flood elevation, and we need to, we need to raise it a certain height, and then, obviously, then the first floor needs to raise a commensurate or proportional amount. We did, in fact, ask for a height variance the first time, your staff convinced us that that was probably a non-starter, so we redesigned the roof lines to get that down. So the only variance we're asking for is the first floor. And I'm not sure whether that's a 4.7 or a 3.7. And I'm not sure whether that's a 4.7 or a 3.7.
Thank you. Um, so this is a public hearing, is anyone from the public who'd like to speak? Did you want to, yeah, sure, come here. Sound like you're an applicant too, so please speak.
My name is Andrew Air, I'm the owner of the property. I've lived across the street at 5425 Halifax Lane, I built a home there, and when this property became available, because our neighbors were moving, we decided to sort of buy this property and build here as well. We have support letter from our neighbors across the street at 5425 Halifax Lane, that should have been included, I think, or is included in your packets. We also have support letter from 5428 Halifax Lane, which is a neighbor that you guys allowed a variance for, Tony Giannakis, he was here in August, I think. He's tearing down the property next door. We also have support from the neighbor that is across the street, one home to the left. I believe that's 5421 Halifax Lane as well. We've reached out to three neighbors, and they all, right away, and supported the project, but if we reached out to all of them, they all know us, they probably would have supported the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, so looking for anyone else from the public who'd like to speak. So I see none, is there a motion to close the...
Close the public?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye, motion carries. Bring it back to Planning Commission. Any comments? Commissioner Bennett?
I guess initially looking through the plans, you know, I noticed there was a sport corner, so I didn't know if, you know, part of that was kind of, you know, justifying, you know, the basement elevation, but from looking at it, as far as I can understand, it's, it's, it's level with the rest of the basement. And for that matter, you know, looking at this and the height being an issue, it seems that it at least matches well with the existing neighbors. One to the, I guess, to the right, and the newly coming ones to the left, and I think that's kind of where, you know, I have to use some discretion. We've seen, again, issues where people are mounding up a house that looks really out of place, and this first level looks pretty good, and, you know, it's solving a bigger problem, which is getting out of the floodplain, which I think is the more critical thing here, so I'm in full support of it.
Any other comments? Is there a motion?
I move approval of variance as submitted, subject to the conditions and finding in the memo.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Post?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thanks. Enjoy. So next is a conditional use permit at 6645 McCauley Trail for Crossview Lutheran Church.
All right, Crossview Lutheran Church, the applicant is proposing to construct a 16,000 square foot addition to the existing church. The proposed addition would include a youth gathering space, early childhood entrance, a kitchen, northex, a main entrance expansion. The proposed work would not include any expansion to the existing sanctuary. The conditional use permit is required for a religious institution due to the fact that this property, 6645 McCauley Trail, is located in a single dwelling unit district and is zoned R1. The subject property, 6645 McCauley Trail, is 4.7 acres and is the current site of the existing Crossview Lutheran Church. There would be minimal change in traffic based on the proposed project. The minimal, the addition provides minimal trips generated, and the traffic generated would have minimal impact on the surrounding intersections and does not change the level of service at those intersections. All intersections have capacity available to accommodate the future growth in the traffic study area. The proposed number of parking spaces can accommodate the expected peak parking demand based on the existing usage and proposed future growth assumptions. There's no additional sanctuary space proposed, and therefore, there is no additional parking that's required with this addition. Building materials on the proposed building addition include brick metal panel, glass curtain wall, and precast bands that would match the existing structure. There are certain requirements that conditional use permits must meet, and staff believes that the requirements of a conditional use permit have been met with this application. The proposed project does not have negative impact on governmental facilities, utility services, or existing or proposed improvements. The traffic generated is within the capacity of the street serving the property. The, it does not have an undue adverse effect on public health, safety, or welfare, does not impede the normal development and improvement of other properties within the vicinity. It conforms to the applicable restrictions and special conditions of the district, which it's located, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Tonight, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit for Crossview Lutheran Church at 6645 McCauley Trail. Approval of the proposed project is subject to the follow, findings outlined in the staff report, as well as the conditions that are listed in the staff report. So here is a survey of the existing church at 6645 McCauley Trail. You can see the addition is to the south of the existing building. They're adding a driveway here for drop-off with, to accommodate the expansion of their entryway, and they are also restriping some parking spaces as well. Here's a couple perspectives of the project, and then here is the elevations, as well as the landscape plan. Have any questions?
Any questions for Emily? Commissioner Lee?
Emily, so churches require a conditional use permit because, and for this particular one, it's in the single dwelling unit district, R1. If they were not doing a renovation, they would not need another permit, so the permit in essence is for the new part that's being constructed.
Yep, the expanded church use on site.
Okay, so once it's constructed, do they now have two conditional use permits, or does it become one?
This one would oversee it, I believe.
Yeah, this would be considered an amended conditional use permit to the original.
Okay, so that's really what we're looking at tonight, is to, they have an existing one, we're, we're kind of amending it to accommodate a renovation. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Emily? Thanks, Emily. So is the applicant here? Would they like to speak? You don't, you don't have to, but, okay. Always giving you opportunity. Okay, so it's also a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak? No, okay. Motion, is there a motion?
I'll move, I'll motion to close the public hearing.
Thanks, second. All in favor? Aye, motion carries. So bring it back to the Planning Commission. Were there any questions? Commissioner Bennett?
Questions but comments, I'm probably going to abstain from this vote. Both of my children attend early childhood education there, but am I able to comment just a little bit?
Yeah, in fact, you, you don't have a financial interest or stake in the project, so you could vote on. If you choose to abstain, you can do that, too.
So I'll just offer some quick comments. So I didn't entirely know all the details of what the, this is, but at least what it's doing for the existing property is enhancing it in kind of a creative way. There's a slope that it's kind of replacing, which, just for safety concerns of people walking and driving, this kind of eliminates it and provides a safer entry for users. So that, from the get-go, I totally support everything with this, and then I guess there was, I believe in the traffic analysis, there was mention of exploring, or maybe there's a lack of bicycle amenities or storage, and so I'd offered to at least try to include that in the, the final plan. I, I have bike trail with my kids, and that does not exist, so, not, not to be like personal, but that isn't there, and it looks like there's going to be a shared use path that's going to go right along the north side of this property in the future, so it seems to be a little proactive to include that now. Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Bennett, do you have something?
Can I comment on the report, the traffic report?
Yes, you can.
So, uh, well, actually, as, as Commissioner Bennett mentioned, there's a plan for a future bike trail along there, but currently, it's, you know, there's not much bike facilities in the area. And so I think the traffic report where, you know, it basically just cut and paste the city's pedestrian and bicycle maps is kind of substandard, so that's all.
All right, so following up on that, I guess, ask Emily if you can, so can we make that, or can we add a condition that they will, you know, accommodate or provide? So it sounds like that is a future pedestrian, future shared use path. Do we know when that's going to happen?
We don't know exactly when that is going to happen, but you certainly could add a condition that they add some bike racks or bike facilities on the site.
Any other comments, or is there a motion, or?
I'd move to approve as submitted with the condition that they add the, the required bike storage when the trail is available.
Is there a second? Any comments? All in favor? Aye. Post? Thank you. Motion carries. I guess I should always say that, someone knows. So the next item is a comprehensive plan amendment for 4100 West 76th Street, with Carrie presenting, and Carrie, the memo says to honorable mayor and council members.
It does, sorry about that.
We're so honored.
Good catch, didn't notice that. So this project before you is located in the Greater Southdale District, so it's just on the west side of France on 76th Street. It's located, well, it's a couple of parcels in from France to the west, the LA Fitness is just to the south. It's the, it's an existing, well, it's no longer functioning, but an old recording studio. They used it as a school during that time. The site is currently zoned industrial, planned industrial district, so it's that yellow that you see on the screen. There's high-density residential to the north, and then office zoning to the north and east. Site's guided in our comprehensive plan as office residential, so residential is a contemplated use on that side of France. The density, the maximum density in that whole OR pink strip here is 30 units an acre. The applicant is contemplating building an 80-unit affordable housing project on the site. The request that's before the Planning Commission this evening is just for the comprehensive plan amendment to increase density on the site. If the council approves the comprehensive plan amendment, they would then come back and go through a rezoning process to rezone it to PUD where we can require the affordable housing, but the action that's requested this evening is just that comprehensive plan amendment recommendation. I would recommend that you do provide, like a sketch plan comments if you're agreeable to the comprehensive plan amendment, you could provide sketch plan comments in regard to the site plan, somewhat similar to the Estelle project, as you recall. I shudder to bring that up, just, but that was the request at that time, was for just a comprehensive plan amendment, and had that been approved, they would have come back for the rezoning. So with that, again, this request is a comprehensive plan amendment to increase the density from 30 units an acre to 40 units an acre. So because we're going through the comprehensive plan right now, this amendment is pertaining just to this site, so we're not looking to increase the density on the whole of, of the west side of France. That discussion will come through the comprehensive plan as we are going through that amendment currently. So because this is a comp plan amendment, the city has a lot of discretion to say yes or no. So this would be the proposed amendment. Again, it would be in that OR district, talking specifically, increasing the density just for an affordable housing project on this site. So primary issue to consider is the comprehensive plan amendment regarding density reasonable for this site. Staff believes that it is. The density range on the west side, as proposed here, 40 units an acre, generally reasonable considering some of the requests that we, that we've had along the west side of France. We often compare this west side to the east side of York, where we've approved densities up to, well, 105 units an acre for the, the gateway, the old Best Buy site, this, we're calling it Aria now. The Onyx Project is 52 units per acre, that's again on the east side of, of York. We have approved higher densities on the west side of France also, the Aurora on France Project is in the 80 unit an acre range. Higher densities are generally located on arterial roadways, again, this is just a short distance off of France Avenue. I've provided a table, you're probably very familiar with it, as we include it for all these density increases, so it's comparable to adjacent cities, Minnetonka, Minneapolis, Bloomington, Richfield, and St. Louis Park. We do have a new affordable housing goal that, with the Met Council, they're recommending that we provide 878 new units by the year 2030. So this project, in increasing density just for an affordable housing project, would help us achieve that goal. A traffic study has already been done by SPAC that, that concludes that the densities proposed here can be supported by the existing roadway system. Max Morland is here, if we have any questions in regard to the traffic. So in regard to, just taking a look at some of the site plan details, should they come back through with the rezoning, they would be requesting some flexibility for setbacks, floor setbacks and the, the required number of parking stalls. They would need 160 based on the units that, that they're contemplating here, 80 units, and they would provide 80, in the 80 to 90 range. We believe that is enough, and the parking study was also done by SPAC. So here's a look at the site plan. There would be underground parking access off of 76th, as you saw in the rendering, it would be a four-story building, consistent with the four-story height limit in this area. There's an existing green space and park behind the building, they would maintain that green space. They're also proposing some proof of parking here, they don't believe they would need these parking stalls, they'd rather have the green space up front, but should they be needed in the future, they could add them there. They would be proposing a bike path along this east lot line here. And we'll go back to the general rendering that they are proposing. So with that, I can, staff is recommending approval subject to the findings that are outlined in the staff report, and with that, I can stand for questions.
I just have a quick question, Carrie. So, you know, we've been getting checks instead of affordable housing units with a lot of the developments we've been approving lately, so is that what's going towards this? Is, is there like a fund that's going towards this project?
Not determined at this point.
Okay.
You know, they may request some financing assistance through the city council, through TIF potentially, but right now, they'd just like to get the comprehensive plan in line where they can start requesting some of the funding sources outside of, of the city. One of the first criteria that, that banks, funding sources look at is, is this project you're proposing consistent with the city's comprehensive plan? Right now, it's, this proposal is not, so that's their first step.
All right. But I know that when we ask about where's that money going, I've heard this project brought up that potentially, you know, versus having it kind of spread out, you know, to maybe concentrate the affordable housing in one location, and it seems like this... And it seems like this was a...
Potentially.
Okay.
It could be.
Right. So that's kind of, that's beyond the planning commission to see that. That's just kind of the, behind the scenes. But if there, if there is funds that we've been accumulating to go towards affordable housing, that could potentially support this. That's not TIF.
That's correct. That would not be TIF, right.
Okay. All right. That was my quick question. Other question, Commissioner Martin?
So does that bike path connect to the parking lot of the, or is there a fence there? Or does it go anywhere?
It wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't go anywhere at this point.
Okay.
It's, it's really addressing one of the, the Southdale, the Greater Southdale Plan, where there is those, those parallel pedestrian bike connections that we're looking for. Guess what they're really saying here is they're, they're open to providing a bike path on the site. You know, if that's the spot, you know, maybe it's on the south, south lot line. But they're open to the idea, which is good.
Right, right. And it, and it looks good because it would connect, you know, if it went all the way through, it would connect to Gallagher and would be part of the whole networks.
Yep.
That'd be great. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Nemroth?
Carrie, do you know, for this affordable housing, are these units intended to be permanently affordable housing? Or are they intended to be affordable housing for a period of years and then become market rate?
Yeah, it would, the goal here would be, they would be, I don't want to say permanent, but much farther beyond the 15-year horizon that we're looking at. I'm sure the applicant will address that as part of their presentation tonight. But yes, much beyond the 15-year window.
Okay. And then you also said this is kind of a, sort of a sketch plan review. At what point tonight should we make comments that are sketch plan type?
I guess really at any point. Or you could, you could separate that, make a decision on the comprehensive plan amendment, and then go into a sketch plan type preview.
Okay. I'll defer.
You could go through the whole presentation and such, and then, kind of like what we typically do towards the end, make our comments. Yeah. Go.
Yeah. Carrie, what was the previous use of the property?
A recording studio, flight time recording.
Oh, sure. Okay. Is it, is it currently occupied, or?
I don't believe that they're in there any longer.
But it was a commercial use.
It was. Yep. And they operated a school in there as well.
Do you know the property to the west? Be below the...
I don't, off the top of my head. I can look it up.
That's right. Thank you.
Should, for one reason or another, this, after this, conditionally, after this is, if this is approved, after it's approved, should it change hands? Would the, would the comp plan revision follow the property?
It would. Yes. Yeah, should, so should the comprehensive plan be amended? It does say strictly for affordable housing. So it would, they would have to come back and conform to that comprehensive plan amendment. You know, if they were to come back and propose just market rate there, we could say, well, no, that's not consistent with the comp plan.
I just have one final one. So in that, in the comp plan text, you know, where you highlighted it, so it states that provided the site be developed with affordable housing, are, are we trying to say that it has to be 100% affordable housing? Or any number of affordable housing?
So we, we could put a number in there, 20% or even 10% is a goal. This is, this gets into the bigger comprehensive plan discussion, where do we want to allow higher densities to help us accommodate affordable housing? So we could put a threshold in there saying, you can reach the 40% threshold if 20% of your units are considered affordable. I'd throw that number out. It could be 10%.
Right. Again, that's where it gets kind of a little complicated, because it is, we are kind of like, spot comprehensive, you know, amendment. So it's like we are tying it completely to what's being proposed tonight.
Yes.
So I don't, I'll see what else, what the rest of the commission thinks, but, yeah. Okay, thanks. Any other comments, Commissioner Lee?
I just wanted to make a comment to you. Yeah, actually, I picked up on that too, and I thought maybe it was a misprint, and it should state that the site be developed for affordable housing. So again, it's something we want to, might want to consider. We are being asked to, you know, change this, increase the density with the idea that it's an affordable housing project. So maybe that's, I don't know how that factors, but I caught that too. Thanks.
Thanks, Carrie. Is the applicant here?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Aubrey Gould. I am a senior project manager with Aon. So Aon is a local nonprofit housing developer. We develop, manage, and own affordable housing. We've concentrated in the Twin Cities metro area. We've been in operation for over 30 years at this point. We've never sold any of our properties. We like to keep our properties affordable, and that's what we do. We go into these projects that they're 100-year projects that are going to be affordable for that period of time. So with this one, what we would have in place, it would be a low-income housing tax credit project. So as a condition of our funding, what is put on the property that is recorded is a low-income restriction agreement. So in this agreement, we would be bound to our funding agreements and then bound to our agreement to keep this project affordable for 30-plus years. So that is a deep commitment that we make to these projects. We're not, I mean, we'll do a small percentage of for market rate, if that's what the community is looking for. But with this one, we have done it entirely affordable. So these would be 80 units of affordable housing. They would be primarily two- and three-bedrooms, so targeted towards families. And we would have, all these units would be affordable at 60% AMI and below. So I think Carrie had in your packet that's for a family of four, at 60% is $56,000. And then we would have additional eight units that would be at 30% income for those long-term homeless. And we'd be working with a service provider to work with those individuals to make them successful in their housing. So definitely looking this as a long-term asset to both Aon and the community. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for the applicant? Commissioner Bennett?
Well, first, not a question, but this is awesome.
Thank you.
Second, yeah, question, just because a lot of times, affordable housing's come up around us, you know, the buck is passed along to someone else. So I still don't have a firm understanding of some of the details, and maybe I ought to, but I figured you'd be a good person to fill me in. For instance, so say a family, you know, gets a spot in here. What's the process of, you know, if, if they become more successful and start exceeding that AMI, what's in place for that? And, you know, to usher in other families that more deserve a spot? And I'm sure this is standard stuff, but I just don't know.
Yeah.
But it helps.
So I believe as part of the funding, they can exceed the income threshold by a certain amount. And then at that point, then we address it. And I, that doesn't happen very often. But yeah, it is our intent that, you know, if people are able to, we want, encourage them to increase their income and to move on if they're able to enter the market. But we don't push anyone out.
Thanks.
I just, I'll add too, I, you know, familiar with the other projects, and they are, they're awesome. They're, they're beautiful, they're well, I mean, it's just very, it's good, it's good work, and I really appreciate what you do.
I appreciate that.
Commissioner Hamilton?
One of the things you noted in your, and perhaps this is better for the architect to answer, but one of the things you noted in your discussion was that the first-floor units had ungrade access, but it appears the only ones that do are the ones that are away from the edge of the property line, facing the bike path or in the courtyard. I think that townhouse, especially that idea, especially for families with kids, is wonderful when you can do it. Was it the intent that this is simply an early iteration of the design, and you're going to explore that later on, or?
So you're saying, explore more walkout units?
Yes.
So we have added additional ones along 76th. And that was a conversation that we had with the planning department. So yes, we are exploring. But yeah, we have it along, I think, three sides right now? One, two, I mean, I think, yeah. So yeah, that is something we can explore further.
Maybe the clarification piece was, what part of the completed design do you think you are? Is this early in the design discussion?
This is, this is really a concept. So we went in for low-income housing tax credits this past June, so we needed to have a schematic of the proposed project. So that's what it was for. So now that we're getting, if we get funding, so we would be notified if we got the tax credits at the beginning of November. And so at that point, then we would launch a more intensive design process with intention to come back to the council for a land use application entitlement process at the beginning of next year.
And it may or may not look different than, than what we see.
Correct. I mean, it's going to be 80 units.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Well, thank you. All right. So this, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak?
I'm Dave Goodwin. I'm one of the owners of the building to the west, 4200 West 76th Street. We are a light industrial use, user of that building. And we did submit a document yesterday, talking about how we objected to this, our concern about the use of this property, kind of in the middle of a bunch of other office buildings. I appreciate the need for low-income housing. I get your guys' push to do that. But we do have some concerns about safety and security and those kinds of things. Like anything, we have had a few issues in the area over the past 25 years of owning the building. So just want to share those concerns of, kind of, this property kind of stuck in the middle of a bunch of other office buildings effectively. So.
Just for clarification, the safety and security are concerned for the other businesses or for the new residents?
For the businesses more, I guess. Yep. So, any questions? Thank you.
Members of the planning commission, including my granddaughter, Isabel Melton. My name is Hope Melton. I live at 4825 Valley View Road, and I am coordinator of a citizen group called Edina Neighbors for Affordable Housing. On behalf of Edina Neighbors for Affordable Housing, I urge the planning commission to approve the comprehensive plan amendment that will allow increased density for the Aon affordable housing development. This is an important and much-needed development for our community for the following reasons. First, the proposed four-story building with 80 units of affordable housing will enable the city to take a significant step towards the achievement of its affordable housing goal of adding 878 units by 2030, the allocation set by the Metro Council. Further, it is especially important that this development will include units at or below 30% AMI, since this is difficult to achieve in Edina due to high land prices. It will provide workforce housing for local employers in Southdale, for example, and other service, healthcare, and entertainment businesses throughout this community. Second, Aon's development is likely to enhance Edina's racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic diversity, another of the city's principal goals articulated by its Race and Equity Task Force report. My understanding is that these units will be permanently affordable, or very close to that, which will mean housing stability for families who otherwise are highly vulnerable in the current rental market. Third, the Aon development is ideally located near public transit and numerous amenities such as parks, employment, services, and schools. Finally, Aon has, and we are members of the Suburban Hennepin Housing Coalition, and what I hear repeatedly is that Aon has an excellent reputation for high-quality construction and building management, which is key for this kind of affordable housing. Edina is fortunate to have this development. I urge you to approve the comprehensive plan amendment for 41 West 76th Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Move the public here.
Second?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. All right. Bringing it back to the planning commission, let's first address the comp plan before we maybe jump into, I think, what Carrie suggested, talk comp plan amendment, maybe make that motion, and then continue. I think let's do that. Okay. Yeah.
Or at least a question to address, well, at least the last discussion from the public. The AMI, that's Hennepin County-based, correct? Not Edina-based?
It's the seven-county metro area.
So at least, you know, 60% of that, it's not 60% of Edina's.
Correct.
Meeting income, just, so 60% is kind of what's standard around this area, correct? Okay. All right, thanks.
Lee?
I just, looking at sort of the current zoning right now, that property is part of planned industrial district. And as Carrie noted, it has a lower density. Tonight, we are, our comp plan amendment is to, to look at increasing a den, is increasing the density. And we are not changing the, the category, the zoning?
Correct.
Okay. So it is one parcel that falls, it's bordered either side by other similarly zoned properties. Carrie, what happens in that case? Further down the road, we would change the category of it, if it were to change over to housing?
We wouldn't change the comprehensive plan category. It still remains OR, Office Residential. They would need to change the zoning to be consistent, to allow the housing there.
In what category would that be?
It would be PUD. So through the PUD, that's where we can ensure that the affordable housing is the only development that can go on the site.
Okay. Okay. One thing I did note is that these are smaller parcels that do, do border back up to, I believe it's multifamily development. So on this side, so in some ways, it seems like a good fit to me.
So, are you done, Sue? Sorry. Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Strauss?
I, I think what they ask is, is to move this to amend the comprehensive plan, which I think is a good thing. And let's, because the goals are so desirable here, you know? And I think the discussion of how that building looks, you know, is, you know, comes or will happen, you know, later. But yeah, I think there's a lot of, maybe, what we can talk about the building, but let's, the project itself, it's certainly deserving to get moved down, moved along.
Commissioner Nemroth?
Yeah, I was going to say something very similar to Commissioner Strauss. The purpose for this is to amend the comprehensive plan, so this affordable housing developer can go seek additional funding to determine the viability of the project. I, I think, oh, that's a good picture of me. I, I think there are a lot, there are valid... I think there are a lot, there are valid discussions about the merits or the, you know, on both sides about reviewing the appropriateness of the project or the design of the project that should still occur. But just like, and I also agree with Hope, you know, that I think we are lucky to have Aon. And from what I can tell, this is a good developer. And getting affordable housing is something we're interested in. So voting yes to amend the comp plan doesn't mean we're voting in favor of the project. But it does mean that here in Edina, where we're struggling to get opportunities for affordable housing, that we're at least helping a viable candidate move further in the process so we can determine later whether it truly is something we want to approve. But in terms of voting to amend the comp plan, I'm all in favor of it to allow that to happen.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, just like to make some general comments about, you know, affordable housing and this particular project and why we're, why we might be in favor of ushering the process forward by making the comprehensive plan amendment. You know, as we sit in this position, if certain projects come by us, you know, a certain percentage of those, depending on its size, have to incorporate affordable housing. And a lot of times, there is a couple ways for us as a city to achieve that. And it's either in those projects, or sometimes those projects, like you mentioned, you know, they can pay some money that gets dedicated toward future projects. So it's, see, they're in these projects sprinkled all around, which is something that we all are in favor of. But then there comes a time where we have an opportunity to concentrate a bunch of those units in a place. And just looking at this place on this map, you know, what's around a half a mile from it, which I just really like this graphic in general, because that's about how often someone would really walk to something. You know, there are a lot of amenities there. There are a lot of places of employment, and there's a lot of connections to transit. And I don't know, at least in Edina, I mean, there's not a lot of affordable land to just make use of this. And this seems like a very, very good location. Maybe not in particular to the exact surroundings. It sounds like there's multifamily behind it and different uses nearby. And I don't think we'll ever have a perfect scenario there. But in general, when you're weighing all these things, this seems like a very, very good location for this type of project. And I'm very pleased with, you know, something like this coming to our city where I feel affordability is dramatically waning. As we see teardowns and other things happening, I think we need to start offsetting these, more with stuff like this and denser areas that can support it.
Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, so kind of to some of Commissioner Bennett's points. Yeah, I mean, I think we talk a lot about not wanting to concentrate this kind of housing in one particular place. But I think we have such a deficit of it that I think we need to kind of, this would kind of help jumpstart the availability of it. So I don't have any problem with that. And then being, the other thing is, you know, hackles kind of go up when you, oh, we're going to put it in the industrial area, you know, of town. But it seems like, as you mentioned, there's, you know, it's bordered by multifamily housing. There's jobs within walkable or bikeable distance. It's right on the trail that will take you to east to Richfield or west to Hopkins. And there's transit available in the area also. So there's just so much that really recommends this to be, to be this kind of project. So I'm very much in favor of it.
Well, I also am very much in favor of this. And again, I agree that we're really lucky to have Aon proposing this because they do really wonderful projects. So we are lucky to have that. You know, I kind of also agree. First, I look, I go, oh, we're sticking in industrial or, you know, office. But it does have the, this is a great graphic. I don't know if people know what we're talking about, showing all the different uses and shopping and parks and civic facilities. And that really swayed me to, you know, agree that this is a good location. And I support this, the comp plan amendment, too.
Move to approve the comprehensive plan amendment from 30 units to 40 units? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. So great. Hopefully, we'll see you again, Sue.
I think there is a little bit more discussion, perhaps, that might be useful to the client, or to the user group, to the applicant, on what we might like to see when the sketch plan arrives.
Right, yeah. No, I was just saying.
Oh, I thought you were saying bye-bye.
Yeah. No, I was saying, yeah. So now we'll open up discussion for the overall. Maybe before we get into that, are you with SPAC?
Yeah.
Great. Maybe, do you want to just, I have a couple of questions on that. Is that okay if we bring them up to kind of present? You know, you could go through the whole thing if you need to. But what I was interested in is, I know that they're looking, they're providing like a sidewalk, but it really looks like there's really no other pedestrian facilities on West 76th Street. Or I know there's going to be a bike lane proposed, but are there no other pedestrian or?
Yeah. So Commissioners on Maxwell and with SPAC Consulting, we did the traffic study for this. And yeah, as you saw on the site plan, they are, right now, there are sidewalks on both sides of 76th Streets. They're not the greatest sidewalks in the world. They're somewhat narrow, and they're right against the street. So there's no buffer. From the site plan, they're showing, at least in front of this development, they're going to bump those out a bit, make a buffer between the road and the sidewalk. So there will be like a grassy strip there, which is a more inviting pedestrian experience when you're not walking directly next to a 40 mile an hour road where there are cars. So at least for this area, they're going to be moving the sidewalk back a bit. I don't, I looked at the city's bike and ped plans, and I don't think there's any changes happening right in front of the development here in the near future. But we definitely would encourage that, especially as there are going to be more people walking in this area with this development.
Did you have any other comments, like as far as traffic or anything else?
Yeah. I mean, just generally, overall, this is going to be a pretty low traffic generator for the area. I mean, if like a medical dental office were to go in, which it could, based on the zoning, it'd be about two and a half times as much traffic being generated. We anticipate in the PM peak hour, about one car every two minutes, 35 cars an hour. And that's for like a market rate apartment. For an affordable housing, we'd probably think it'd be even lower than that. We don't have exact numbers on that. But some research we found said it could be even 50% lower than a market rate apartment. So pretty low generated traffic throughout the day. Kerry touched on the parking, 83 stalls for 80 units. We anticipate, based on what we've seen in other apartments, the transit in the area, the pedestrian facilities, kind of the walkability, that that's going to be sufficient parking for the development. So overall, we don't see any issues on the roadways or the nearby intersections from the traffic from this development.
And turn this on. I notice that you mentioned like a mid-block crosswalk.
Yeah, yeah. So right now, there's bus stops on either side of 76, pretty much almost right in front of this development. And those bus stops are there today. So we assume people are using them. And that's for the Route 6, which is a pretty popular route, brings you up through South Minneapolis to downtown Minneapolis. And if you were at this building and you wanted to get to the bus stop across the street in the morning to take the bus up to downtown, if you were going to follow marked pedestrian crossings, you could walk over to France Cross and come back. And that'd be about a quarter mile to get across the street. And so we think that this would actually be a good location for a mid-block crossing because of the transit stops there. Even without this development, it'd be a good location today with the transit stops there. Because we assume, you know, if someone takes the bus to and from work, at one point, they're going to have to cross the street. And just with the speeds on the road, the volumes, and the transit stops, we think a mid-block crossing, marked stripes, signs, ideally even pedestrian-activated push buttons that flash the signs, we think that'd be a good location for it.
Any questions to?
So would that include like bump outs or something to make it safer, you know, a shorter distance to cross the street there?
I don't think you could do bump outs here because there's not really a shoulder without cutting into the lanes, making it, right now, it's a four-lane road. So you'd have to narrow it down. But so we, instead of bump outs, we'd probably recommend like retro, or RFBs, rapid flashing beacons sort of things that pedestrians can push to activate those.
Yeah. I mean, that's, four-lane roads are pretty dangerous for pedestrians, right? Because one car stops, and then the car in the other lane passes and doesn't stop. So some of that would be useful. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks for being patient with that. Do you have, do you want to open up the comments? Yeah?
The piece is, when you come back for the sketch plan review, that I thought would be interesting. We've heard one of your neighbors say that security is an issue. And I think one of the ways to address security is as many eyes on the street as you can have from the complex. So what that looks like and how you address that beyond the windows that look out, as many doors, as many access points, perhaps balconies and decks, perhaps whatever. But to get that visibility and view, both for your building and into the adjacent buildings, it probably would be a good thing.
Commissioner Mabath?
The, my guess is that a lot of these things you're hearing or going to hear tonight are things you hear regularly. And so my guess is that you probably have programs and processes in place that you'll just implement to deal with them, like security. And another issue is, as I mentioned, this property will require a variance for parking, which is fine. I don't think people's concern is, do you have enough parking? I think people's concern will be, do you have enough parking so that people don't start parking on the streets around it? And we hear that, just so you know, we hear that recently with neighbors of another, in another district are saying, well, we're worried that a popular restaurant is going to come in, that people are going to park in our neighborhood. It's just something that people worry about. Is there going to be short-term parking on my street? So when you come back, if you can say how you will address that or prevent that from happening, that would be helpful.
Any other comments? Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, you know, maybe just a question, too, about the 80 units. It looks like that's kind of the sweet spot for the balance of, you know, the footprint with the parking you can get subgrade. But, you know, I'm in Edina, so I want my cake and eat it, too. So can you, is there a way to get, you know, another, you know, another level into this building or some way to, you know, architect some more? There's a lot of green space to have some underground parking that maybe resides under green space or something to accommodate more units? Or is that just kind of the sweet spot for this type of development? And you don't have to answer that now, but just at least for the next time of why, why 80 units? Why here? Why in this way? And then, yeah, kind of to, I guess, just looking at some of the storage, I'm assuming some of the external bike racks are for guest parking, but it doesn't look like a lot of them. So I think there's a bike room in that one corner. So I'm assuming that's kind of, you know, the users are going through the bike rack and coming into there. Just, just to kind of explain more of that story, so we kind of get the full sense of that imbalance of parking, just offset by all the alternate modes of transportation. And I guess one question now for them, but at least for our group to think, too, is for that buffered sidewalk, I know along France, we have like a pretty robust requirement. You know, is that something we want to see on some of these auxiliary roads, too, connecting to them? Like wider sidewalks, like I think, what, 40 feet or 50 feet setback? Is that something we want to, you know, be seeing on some of these properties, too? And encouraging? Because, you know, this looks like it's the first piece to a future puzzle. So this would be the one to test it on.
To be honest, I'm real familiar with what we're doing on France, but on the side streets, I don't know if we've really looked at that in detail. But I assume that when this comes through again, Kerry, that Mick would do his little, give us advice on the sidewalk. I guess we shouldn't really delve into like the building and stuff, because it's all just, that's all going to probably change when you come back, right? So we'll just kind of keep it basic, right? That what you were thinking? Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, I just thought the idea of showing that kind of reserved parking was a good idea, that, you know, they could have additional parking, but they'd prefer not to have it.
That's it? Yeah. Now, now you can go. Thank you. So next on the agenda is community comment. Is there anyone here, anyone want to make a motion to close community comment?
I'll move to close community comment.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. So we've got Bill next to talk about the TIF district for 44th and France. Thanks, Bill. So welcome, Bill. And I think you know that we've had a lot of emails, kind of internally going back and forth on this subject. And I thought, it's part of your presentation, Bill, if you could maybe kind of expand and cover some of the, should I wait until you're on before I talk to you?
I'm listening.
I'd be confused multitasking. Anyway, just to kind of also, maybe it's part of your presentation, but if it's not, maybe, you know, before you can finish it, just to kind of cover kind of the overall goal or vision of TIF for the city, like we were discussing, you know?
How much time do you have?
We're ahead of schedule, so.
I'm happy to answer and respond to the questions as I'm able to. Let me pull up this. I think that's it.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. As you mentioned, my name is Bill Nundorf. I'm the city's Economic Development Manager. This evening, I'm here again with a simple request. But in the past, this has been a confusing request that always leads to lots of questions. So there were some email exchanges earlier in the day to answer some questions. And as I said, I'm happy to respond to those as I'm able to. But tonight, my request is a simple one. I'm seeking the input of the planning commission as the HRA, the City's Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and city council consider the creation of a new tax increment financing district, a TIF district. Over the last couple weeks and months, both the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, as well as the city, have started to consider creating a new TIF district to help support the project at 4500 France Avenue. That was a project, I think the last time it visited to this group was back in August. And this group recommended approval. I forgot what the exact vote was, but you recommended approval of that project. As part of that zoning journey, the city council then gave the preliminary approval just a few weeks ago. But while there's a conversation about regulatory matters with the planning commission and the city council, there's also other discussions about funding and how you actually build this thing. And so for several months, in fact, probably for about a year, the developer has made it known that they would be seeking tax increment financing to help make their project and their vision feasible. So the first step in that journey is to create a TIF district. So the input I'm looking for tonight is regarding land use and zoning matters for the project. Over the last month or so, we've also reached out to city departments to look into other relevant matters, public safety, fire safety, street work, utility work, those types of things. We reached out to the school district. We reached out to the county. There's a county road in front of the France Avenue. It's a county road. And so all these steps, including my visit here And so all these steps, including my visit here tonight, are steps on the way that will eventually be put in front of the City Council to have them make the decision about, number one, do we create a TIF district? And then, number two, do they use the TIF district? So tonight, I have a couple of handouts. These were in the packet. There's a large map on the screen that shows the city and the location of the district or the potential district. And, let's see, let me go to the next. So this is at the intersection of Sunnyside Road and France Avenue, part of the 44th and France Commercial District or Neighborhood Node, I think, as we're now calling it in the Small Area Plan. This project, in its most recent iteration, consists of about 46 apartments and about 7,000 square feet of commercial space. There's also underground parking and indoor parking on the main level. There's a public plaza, new streetscapes, utility lines, a lot of infrastructure work to get to those 46 units. And based on some of the conversation about regulatory matters that I'm not fully versed in, there's, I think, a debate about the size of the commercial space, the parking count, those types of matters. I'll leave those decisions to you all and the City Council. But the, the question that I have for you tonight is, is in regards to the land use of the, of the project and how it conforms with the city's plans or how it does not conform. So the, to kind of put this simple question in context, I have a slide that I've used before for this group and others. It's part of the conversation about what is tax increment financing? How does it work? When do we use it? When don't we use it? Why do we use it? But this, this slide talks more about the process. How do you use it? And suffice it to say that tax increment financing has been used in the state of Minnesota for about 40 years. Edina was one of the leaders in the use of it in the early 70s, when, when we did some work at 50th and France. And then the, in the 80s, when we, when we did Edinburgh Park, late 80s and 90s, when we did Centennial Lakes. But it's a very bureaucratic process that's governed by state law, is, is the nice way to put it. So the, the first step in the process is to actually create the TIF district. And what that does is allow the, the, the tax assessor and the financial piece of it to start becoming a possibility. So my visit here tonight is actually step one half. So before we create the, the district, we have to do our due diligence. So I mentioned, reach out to the Planning Commission about land use matters, reach out to the schools, reach out to the county, reach out to the fire department, Public Works Department, and all those folks. So once we continue with this process, if the City Council does decide to create a TIF district, the next, the next step is to consider how you use the, the monies, the taxes that are, that are generated there. And then the third step in the process that continues on for, for many years is monitoring and compliance. Again, state law has very strict guidelines. If the, if the district is not performing well, or if the project stalls, the district basically expires. So there's several checks and balances along the way. And one of the main reasons that, that I feel confident in my recommendation to, to both this group, as well as the City Council, to use tax increment is based on much of the content in the new Small Area Plan that was prepared this summer. And if you, my apologies, this, this version got a little bit fuzzy. But in Chapter Five of that Small Area Plan, there is a section on economic vitality that also carries over into Chapter Nine, which is the implementation chapter. And one of the principles that is recommended in the Small Area Plan is that, and this is the second bullet in that yellow area, but there's a provision that says the city will use redevelopment tools to create public Rome improvements, including streetscape, pedestrian, bicycle safety amenities, public parking, utility and transportation improvements, stormwater improvements, parks, plazas, and green space. So the, the, the project, that's the subject of this TIF plan, responds to that directive pretty nicely. And you've seen the plans, you know them better than I do, frankly. So, but, but that's the connection to, to the tax increment financing. So the recommendation and the request tonight is to, actually, the, I'm sorry, the request is to execute a resolution that finds that the proposed plan, which is the 4500 France Avenue apartment plan, is consistent and conformance with the general planning guidelines in the city, which would be the comp plan and the small area plan. In my report, I've gone through a little bit more laborious summary of, of how it complies, what it responds to. I did find it very interesting that the Small Area Plan for 44th and France gets really specific, which is nice from a, I think it's nice from a staff and a community perspective, where it identifies required and discretionary goals that should be pursued in the future. It also identifies specific project goals that should be pursued, like new sidewalks, streetscapes, traffic calming, graceful transitions to the surrounding neighborhood. And then it also identifies discretionary goals, and those include things like shared parking, underground parking for residents rather than surface parking, provision of public art, provision of quality architecture. So that there's a number of different goals in the Small Area Plan that I believe that this proposal responds to. So that's how I arrive at my recommendation to find that the proposal is in compliance with, with the Small Area Plan. So the, that's the resolution that's in front of the group tonight. Sounds simple, oftentimes gets more complicated, and so I'm happy to answer your questions as I'm able.
Thank you. Well, who wants to start with the questions? Anyone have questions for Bill? No questions? Wow, quiet. Did not expect that. Go for it.
I mean, are we discussing the, because in section, subsection 2.6 says classification of the district. I mean, are we discussing that at all tonight? Or is that a fait accompli? Or what, what's going on with that?
Yeah, great question. So, um, so the duration of the district or the type of the district is really a City Council decision, not a Planning Commission. But in response to your question, there's several types of TIF districts in state law. I would say the most popular is the, is a district called a redevelopment district, which goes on for 26 years. There's other districts, another one is called a renewal district, which goes on for 15 years. And staff is strongly recommending that we go with a renewal district for 15 years. We reviewed the financials of the project. Again, something we'll get into detail with the City Council. But there's definitely a financial gap in their pro forma. We don't have to go 26 years to solve the problem. 15 years will be just fine. So that's where the, where the staff is recommending.
Commissioner Schuss?
Bill, I, I wish I could get my head wrapped around TIF, but I, I don't think I'm the only one. So that 15 years, basically, it's money being, or certain opportunities for the developer. And the city gets stuff, you know, for that, and in lieu of, you know, to help his project go forward. But the project itself would generate whatever commitment that the city might not get initially in 15 years. I mean, so there's some recovery? Is that what, what you're talking about, that 15-year, like?
Sure.
We end up in a much better place?
Sure.
And obviously, that's Centennial Lake from a gravel pit to what you have now, it's got to be a huge, whatever. But, yeah, just help me with those numbers.
Sure, sure. So kind of a TIF 101.
Yes.
So the concept of tax increment financing has been around since the early 1970s. It's used in every state in the nation. Essentially, the, the, the current taxes that are paid by any property are essentially frozen. So typically, you, you don't do this on a, on a prosperous, thriving site that's growing good tax base, that's not really productive. But you do it for a site that is vacant, declining, needs help, and is not growing in its taxes, that's stagnant or declining. And so the, the idea, general idea is that if they pay a certain level of taxes, taxes today, theoretically, that would continue, staying about the same or declining. The, the intention with tax increment financing is that you give an incentive to make the, to make a new project possible, and not just a coat of paint or a facelift or something like that, a major new project. If you look through the TIF plan that we provided, the estimates, just to get precise rather than hypothetical, is, right now, the, the site pays about $28,000 a year in taxes. With a new project this scale, that actually comes off and gets delivered and gets finished and, and is, is done, creates a factor of 10 times that amount. So it goes from $28,000 a year to about $265,000 a year. A portion of those monies can then be used to pay for all that good stuff that you're getting. In some communities that I would say are desperate for investment, they use TIF a little bit more generously than Edina does. In this case, we're only considering TIF from a staff perspective because there's this, there's this public benefit. There's a public parking easement. There's a public plaza. The developer has agreed to bury the utility lines, not just on his site, but pretty much in the whole district. There was a couple other ones that I'm, that I'd lost track of. But, but the general idea is that those new taxes are then used to pay for this public benefit, but only for a finite period of time. And then when that time is over, whether it be eight years, or 15 years, or 26 years, then the project hasn't just gone up by one or 2% a year, but the Centennial Lakes project is a good example, where it increased by a couple thousand percent. So not just a little incremental change, but a massive growth to the community from a tax-based perspective. So that's in a flash TIF 101.
That's helpful. Very good. Thank you.
We can continue with the questions, but again, I just want to emphasize tonight, you're saying that we can only, we're only really focusing on if the development is in compliance with the comprehensive plan.
Right, my, my, correct. My question to you comes from state law, and that is the directive, that, that is the question that they asked me to ask you. And so that is the question I hope you can answer.
Okay. Commissioner Emmert?
This is a question for Commissioner Bennett, Commissioner Miranda, who worked on the 44th and France Small Area Plan. That last slide of Bill's said that the 44th and France plan talked about, you know, using economic development tools to do these sorts of things. Was TIF what you guys had in mind? It says, use redevelopment tools. Was, was TIF something that was considered to be in the scope of that?
That was actually a point of contention in the editing of the document. I believe it said TIF initially, and then there was some discussion about whether that was too specific, or whether we were actually approving right then and there that we wanted to use TIF or not. You know, and I think the, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the general gist was that we wanted a more generic statement, which is what, what does it say? Redevelopment tools was, rather than saying the neighborhood itself approved of TIF. I think that was the idea there.
Yeah, I'd agree. And I guess having it in there then maybe starts a conversation off with, you know, the developer not giving as much as they would, or they overcommit with the expectation of having another funding source. It's not necessarily part of that conversation. So we didn't want to cloud any of that.
So was there a contemplation that you would use economic redevelopment tools, such as TIF, to fund the exact same developments that were the give, the give-to-get? Because that's what we're getting tonight. We've already, we approved a variance based on the same factors. Those were the give. And now we're, what we're giving, what was given to the city is now going to be paid for by the city by TIF. I mean, was that, is that in compliance with, was that contemplated by the Small Area Plan?
I mean, I don't think that's in the spirit of what the give-to-get really was, but clearly, all things are on the table for a developer to seek a funding source. But, yeah, I guess, I mean, that's the give-to-get, not for the city to ultimately pay for the give.
Ask a question of Bill at, at that point. Bill, how careful, how open has the developer's books been? How do you see what their pro forma is? Can you explain to us how you understand why TIF is necessary and why you feel confident that the give-to-get isn't simply a, a handout to a developer who has discovered a very nice parcel and is going to build a very nice project and own it?
Yeah, I'm happy to provide some information as, as background. Again, not really relevant to the decision tonight, but when the city considers the use of tax increment financing, we require and demand that the developer work with us from an open perspective. So we sit down, staff sits down with the developer. The city engages a third-party consultant, a public finance firm, Ellers and Associates, that does a lot of work for the city of Edina, as well as many other cities throughout Minnesota and the Upper Midwest. And we sit down and we scrub their numbers. So oftentimes, the performas are not, you know, it's pretty sensitive. They've got some information in there that they don't want, you know, the competitor, competitive to, to figure out. So I think we went through their numbers three or four different times. And when I reported initially to the Housing Authority back in May, my recommendation was, was not supportive of, of their request. Their request was very high, and it wasn't tight. It was very loose. And so my recommendation to them was if they want to get serious, redo your numbers, pursue grant funding, refine your costs, get better cost estimates from your contractor, see if you can talk the land price down, look into value engineering, look, consider bang for buck. And then it's always the, the balance of bang for buck, and what do you need to do to get the neighborhood excited? What do you need to do to get the Planning Commission to agree that this is a positive thing for the community? And then the same question for the City Council. So the, in late summer, the developer did come back with a revised set of numbers that were more agreeable, more in line with what we see in, in typical situations. And so we eventually got to a point where we could recommend that we actually get to this point and start scheduling meetings and having the conversation. This particular developer has been pretty open with his numbers. When we, you know, there were some difficult conversations, and there was several weeks or a couple months where there was no response, but they did come back once they got things back, put back together. One of the other things to, to keep in mind as well is, in this case, the, the developer is the party at risk. So we, sometimes I think someone mentioned the city's money. Was it anticipated that the city's money was used for this? The developer's money is at risk. If he performs, he has a chance to get reimbursed. If he doesn't perform, he gets nothing, and the city loses nothing, although we still end up with a couple vacant buildings. And then if he performs, and he performs so well, the profits are through the roof, we go back and look at the numbers again every year for the next 15 years. And if his numbers are too high, we pull back what we put in. So there's a number of, of different safeguards, some mandated by state law, and others are just best practice. The city of Edina does not use TIF very often. In fact, we counted from the, of the, in the last six years, since around 2010, 2011, there's been 52 major projects in the community. We've used tax increment financing on three of them. So about 5.7% of projects, we actually used TIF. And those are projects that deliver a significant public benefit. As I mentioned, other communities are not as stringent with, with tax increment. In Edina, we don't need to give incentives to get projects to come in here. But it is helpful, in the city's, in staff's opinion, for projects that deliver a, a significant public benefit, to do what it takes to get them to be viable.
Bill, can you just walk me through this three times? Because in the packet... Because in the packet, I don't know where it was, I saw 2012, which I think was a TIF district for Southdale Mall, right?
Yes, yep. Southdale Mall, Southdale 2.
Yeah. How much was that?
How, was what?
How much was that TIF?
So there's lots of different, simple question, complex answer. I think what you're asking is what the TIF deal was? So in 2011, 2012, the city entered into an agreement with Simon Properties to redevelop the mall, not just with a facelift, but to totally redo the interiors and the exteriors. The city pledged a $5 million interest-free loan to be repaid, provided that the developer of Simon Properties put in a minimum of 15 million. The developer ended up putting in close to 45 million, and we've been paying them back, or they've been paying back their interest-free loan.
Okay.
So I think that's a question that you're asking.
Yeah, so that, okay, so that, so there was, that wasn't TIF then, the Southdale?
So we use TIF as a mechanism for the loan. That's where the funds came from.
Okay.
Through the TIF mechanism.
All right. And then in 2012, there was the Southdale 2 Tax Increment Financing District. Is that separating that, or was that a, how did that change the Southdale? Was that a different project?
That was that. Yeah, so South, so kind of like the conversation tonight, and Madam Chair, let me know if we're going too far astray, but so there's a TIF district, and then there's a TIF project. So the Southdale is actually a great example. You've got the Southdale 2 TIF district, a big district that's maybe, gosh, Southdale's probably close to 100 acres down there. And then you've got one TIF project, which is the mall, that's part of that TIF district. So similar to my request tonight, we would request to, propose to do a one-acre TIF district, and then separately, the HRA and the city council would consider doing a TIF project with that developer.
I see. So you're saying there might have been more than three TIF districts, but there's only been three TIF projects approved so far?
That's correct.
Because like, there's the Pentagon Park TIF district, the Grandview TIF district, but there's no project with TIF money there. 50th and France, 50th and France is Market Street. That's how there is a project there. Okay. All right. So three TIF projects, more than three TIF districts, though.
Right. There's currently, I think, five TIF districts in Edina.
I misunderstood. Okay, thank you.
I think I would like to bring it back to the subject tonight. So we are asked to confirm that the project is in compliance with Edina's comprehensive plan, including the recently approved small area plan. Is there a motion, or?
I move resolution 2018-1, finding that the proposed district is in compliance or conforms with the general plans of the small area plan and the comprehensive plan.
Second? Second? Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to comment.
I'm going to vote no. I respect the people who vote yes, and I want to be on record as to why I'm voting no. It's because I do not believe that this project meets the small area plan, the spirit of the small area plan. And I believe that had we known a month ago, when we approved the small, that the project, had we known that the give-to-get was going to be paid for through TIF money, I know at least one member would not have voted to approve that variance. And I think that was a material fact that would have affected the discussion. So that's why, that's why I'm voting no on this resolution.
Any other discussion? I guess I would add, I'm going to vote in favor of it, because I do think that it is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the approved small area plan. But I do think that this, as you sit down, Bill, I'm talking to you. I think that this does, you know, really kind of identify kind of a glaring, where we need more transparency, clearly. We need to understand, you know, when this is happening and the overall city policy. And I think that, I kind of agree with what I said. If we would have known all of this, because a lot of it is now, this TIF is going to be used to provide what we were getting, you know, to, for us to approve that whole, the whole give-to-get. I know we're trying to get away from give-to-get a little bit, but, so a part of me, yeah, I think we need to have a bigger, better vision that clearly doesn't allow that, or, you know, just let the developer know that, that give-to-get, they have to give it, and it's not turning around and asking the city to support it.
Can I respond to that, please?
Yes. Kenny? We're in a discussion. Yeah, sure.
So the, I understand your concern and your, and your suggestion. One thing to be cautious of, though, is, is to make sure that the planning commission and city council make their decisions on the land use matters without taking the financial perspectives into consideration. I know that there's somewhere in the state law, there's, you get your hand slapped when those lines cross. And I don't know exactly where that is. I think our city attorney would probably know better. But I also agree, and we mentioned, Mr. Teague and I have spoken about this earlier today and over the last couple months, that there is a goal to have a tighter, more clear TIF policy in Edina. Similar questions have come up, not just by your group, but as we've frankly been working with the city council on some of the Pentagon Park projects. We had hours and hours and hours of public meeting and conversation this summer about what's appropriate for TIF, what isn't, what's part of the zoning, what isn't. And from that conversation, it became apparent that there's not consensus on the council. So the city's staff is in the process of doing research on some other communities' TIF policies. It's really helpful from a staff perspective to look at these small area plans and look at these goals that are identified, to help us understand what might need to happen to reach those goals. So I think in the next couple months, there will be a clear TIF policy that hopefully can address your concern about what's give-to-get and what isn't. So I want to let you know that we are working on that.
All right, so we have a motion. Have more discussion? Sure.
Bill, since you're still there, can you, can you bring up that flow chart again that you had referenced, and it showed what the planning commission role is? Okay.
Sure. That one? Yeah, so the role of the planning commission in this case is to opine regarding the land use matters of the plan. So that there's a document called the TIF plan, and then there's about two pages of that document that talk about what the project is. So in this case, it's the same project that this group saw back in August. In other districts, it's different. I mean, like the Pentagon Park District, for example, there was a very fuzzy map of what the project would be. For this particular proposal, the project in the plan is the same thing that was just approved by the planning commission and the city council.
Okay. And I did have one last question. You mentioned that you did reach out. Part of the process is that you reach out, and now you're reaching, you reached out to county and the schools, and now you're reaching out to the planning commission. Does it ever come back that the planning commission is the one who somehow recommended a TIF district? I have seen documentation where later, and it wasn't necessarily in a TIF district, but much as this document here says, the Housing Foundation, I mean Housing Redevelopment Authority, HRA, has recommended that the TIF district be considered. If we vote to approve tonight, does it somehow convey, or could it be taken, or construed, or even used, that the planning commission somehow approved of a TIF district?
Okay. I understand your question. No, because the planning commission is not being asked to approve the whole district, the term, the budget, the, any of those matters. It's strictly opining on the land use perspective. And the reason that we follow this format is really back, again, going back to the state law. The state law says you ask your HRA and your city council to approve the project, the overall TIF plan and project. It specifically says that is not a decision by the planning commission, it's a decision by the elected officials. So we try to follow the letter of the state law to a T. Otherwise, it just brings uncertainty, potential legal risks, and we'd rather just follow the rules in this case.
Well, as long as I have you here, we just, we are about to finalize the 70th Cahill Plan, and there was very strong opposition to using any TIF money in the study area.
I'm going to interject, Sue, because we're in a motion, we're discussing our motion, that I don't think we should be expanding it to others.
Oh, I just wanted to get clarification from him on that.
But can we do that?
Okay.
Yeah, we're in the middle of the motion, I would say now.
All right. Well, then I do want to add a comment.
Okay.
Okay. So obviously, because this project was approved, or recommended to the city council for approval, that in itself does not construe that we felt it met the comp plan, correct? Because you're obviously here, asking for our approval again, right?
Again, state law says I need to ask a specific question in a specific way at a specific time. I could try to, try to do what you suggest and use a passed action. I don't want to end up in court and fighting this out and have it become the Edina rule. I'd rather just follow the state law. And so that's the process that we're in tonight.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So Bill, I'd like to discuss with you offline, your comments about land use with regard to this project. But right now, one thing I do want to address, I do think relates to the motion, is the comment about not, seems like there's a, the lack of understanding about what give-to-get is, which is, I don't think accurate. I think it's pretty clear that give-to-get is the things that were in Carrie's presentation when we approved the thing, that are also showing up in this. I don't, I don't understand the, we need to be more clear about what give-to-get is. You, again, I'll respect the approval, but I don't, I wanted to, I didn't care, I didn't agree with that.
I think where we're looking for clarity is what's paid for through TIF, and what's, what are they truly giving as part of the land use, the land use request? What are we getting there that's paid for by the development, and then the TIF is separate?
Yeah, that is, and that takes us offline to another topic, but yeah, okay.
I'm just, I'm on the fence with this and lean to not supporting it, just because, at least when we explored redevelopment tools, a lot of, you know, opposition to TIF came when, for whatever reason, but kind of stemmed from, could it help include some of the large goals that we had, predominantly the parking in that area, being a central district parking? You know, this being its own district and its own project, that, you know, that potential there is limited elsewhere in this district overall, or small area. And I know we've had times where TIF districts have expanded, and maybe that's something you could comment on, but that's, that's just where I stand.
If I'm extending this, but again, what we're, what the motion is, to confirm that the proposed project, so the 4500 France Avenue Apartments, are in compliance with Edina's comprehensive plan and the recently approved small area plan, not the TIF piece. Okay, so we have a motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So do we, did you catch all that? So there's three, 5-3. Got, okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So the next on the agenda, and thank you for being patient with your, here for the daycare, is a sketch plan review for the New Horizon daycare.
Hey, Secretary, you finally got to sign something. Okay, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Before you, we have a sketch plan. It's a little bit different of a sketch plan that we typically see. Typically, we're doing sketch plans for the big rezoning projects. This isn't a rezoning. It's really all that's required here would be a site plan review and a variance. But I guess actually, we've done sketch plans for projects that were code-compliant, too, I think of the Think Bank project, so maybe this isn't so unusual. So this project is located at the Valley View and Wooddale area, where we have a completed small area plan. It's 4412. It's the ice cream shop and the little dry cleaners there at the intersection of Kellogg and Valley View Road. Site is zoned planned commercial district. That same zoning would allow the uses, the use that we're looking at here. The small area plan suggests this site could be developed up to three stories, 36 feet. There is on the back side here, where we talk about that transition down to the neighborhood with the two-story. What the applicant would like to do here is remodel and put a little addition on the site for a daycare. So you can see the main form of the building, although it's a pitched roof, they would go to a flat roof. A daycare facility with the play areas up on the roof. In order to get the kids and the instructors and teachers up to the roof, they need to build an elevator and a stairwell up there, and there's a lobby. So that's this blue element here. That structure would be 41 feet tall, so that's over the 36 feet, as outlined in the, suggested in the comprehensive plan. Just a quick, and I'll let the applicant go through in a little more detail, but you can see the two play areas, residential home to the north and to the east. They're maintaining essentially the same parking field. They would be adding some landscaping and the boulevard-style sidewalks, what we're looking for in the small area plan. So they would need a couple of variances. Here are three. The parking stall variance from 27 spaces to 22, and the building height variance, the zoning district has a 24-foot height max. And again, the top of the elevator is 41 feet. And a building setback variance on that north side. The setback requirement is the height of the building, and that structure would be five-foot setback. So I'll just quickly move you around, and the applicant has a 3D where this, where the building moves around, and you'll see it in a little more detail. But I might stop there and answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions for Carrie? Commissioner Bennett?
Carrie, can you just wa, well, walk through some of the history of development, you know, right around here? You know, a few things have come our way, and just, just to paint a broader picture of what's been going on there?
Yeah, that's a good question here. Yeah, so maybe this site, this picture will show. So the city recently approved the, I'm trying to think of the name of it, the flat, Edina Flats. For the corner here, there was the city-owned piece, and the developer took it up, I believe it's to this slot line. So this is the area that's under construction for housing on that site, and then also the corner down here, this site here. So that's the townhome condo project. So essentially, on either side, oh, my arrow has moved here. The arrow is actually pointing to that, the Edina Flats, the site that we're looking at here is where the arrow is. So this site is in between those two projects.
It's kind of just rounding out that whole south side, or north side of Valley View, I should say.
Currently, the daycare is to the south, located here?
Yeah.
Or no? Do I have that right? Is it? It's this one over here? Yeah. So essentially, they would be moving across the street.
And is it, and I guess what's occurring with that former site?
What happens to the site if they move over?
Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, that might be a question for.
Well, let's have the applicant come up and give their presentation.
So, they're down here at the bottom when you're ready for them. Whoop, or should I just leave it?
Leave it. Just let it run.
Hi, I'm Peter Gohner, Ryan Law, LLC, New Horizon, for a long while. So, I'd like to consider this before. I want to give you a little bit of background on why we're looking at this particular development. First of all, there's a, hi, Jill Dunkley is with me here tonight. She's chief counsel for New Horizon Development Officer.
Yeah, Vice President, Business Development.
Yeah, so, way up there. So, they have an increased demand for childcare in Edina, that's good news for you. The existing facility has proven to be inadequate. It is, thank you, it is the kind of a situation where this particular site became available and is already zoned for childcare. There was a childcare in there at one time, as you may recall. So, it was already zoned for childcare use. We looked at the plan to remodel the existing building as it is, without doing anything to the site, and that was the condition upon which we could move into the building and do nothing, all right, other than bring the interior of the building up to code. Today, as that building sits, it was built in 1957. As that building sits, it is not code compliant, as you well imagine. It is also not zoning compliant. There's all kinds of issues with this building. It's, in a lot of ways, very, very, from an architectural perspective, it's a very tough challenge. So, what we sought to do is first, before acquiring the site, we wanted to make sure that we could move into this building. And we met with Carrie, we met with the building official, we did a thorough code review of it, to make sure that we could comply. We could. I, there was a timeframe involved between when we would need to vacate the existing building that we have, which we do not own, it's a leased facility, to move into this particular building, but we wanted to reserve the real estate options. I suggested to New Horizon Academy that we could do a lot better. And what I mean by saying do a lot better, is maybe propose a little bit of a bolder statement for this particular project, which would allow us to create two play spaces for the two age groups that we normally deal with, toddler and preschool. Toddler on the lower roof, the roof of the existing one-story old gas station-like-looking structure, and the preschool up on the upper level by removing the roof trusses of the existing office building, replacing it with a new set of roof trusses, and putting a playground on essentially that flat roof. That not only provides a safe environment, but it also preserves enough site area to provide for 22 parking stalls, green area, sidewalk, all in accordance with what your wishes are for this particular corner. The only thing we require, then, is to go from 25 to 22 parking stalls as a variance, which is being, has already been, but will be demonstrated to you by a traffic study as being supported for 22 parking stalls. We've already received that information. Lost my train of thought there for a moment. So, we're going to meet the parking requirements, so the only other piece is the height requirement. The other piece of this that, let me scroll around here, is this, this is it again? Whoop. How do, is it right here? Here we go. So, as you see this thing rolling around, right now, you're on the main road, but we are at the low part of the site. The rear part of the site that faces towards the residence to the north is actually between five and six feet higher than the street grade. So, one of the questions about the height variance that comes into play here is, from where are we measuring it? Are we measuring it from the neighbor's house? Or are we measuring it from the main street? We do have that topographical advantage on this particular property, which reduces the impact of the height variance on the neighbor to the north and the neighbor to the east. You'll probably notice, let me stop this for a moment. How do I stop? Right here? Okay. Where's the rest of the folder here, Carrie?
Yeah.
Right there? This one?
That's probably what you had it on.
Okay.
Was that my presentation?
No, I was looking for the plans. Did you have the plans here? Well, I could, I could use, I could work from this, don't worry about it, I'll work from this. So, if you look at this particular diagram right here, right there on this site, there's a retaining wall, right here on this particular corner, can you all see this? There's a retaining wall on this particular corner, and this, the main level of this building, right here, this portion of the building, is at least half below grade, all right? This whole portion, this eastern lot right here, is also in that same condition, below grade. This little portion of the lot is sort of an ironic situation on this particular site, because this particular resident, right here, has an easement across the property here to access this little parking space. That exists on the property, there's not a lot we can do with that. If we were to ignore that particular easement, they would be locked out of that, their access to this particular parking area and this particular garage. So, we have to maintain this portion of the site merely for the neighbor's access. We have no choice on that. No matter what goes there, we have no choice on that. So, that's one of the challenges that we have. So, we have to preserve this side for the parking. Like I said, this is all partially below grade. Currently, the way the building exists, there is one legal exit out of the office building to the front. The second means of egress from the upper level goes across this roof, down a stairwell, a wooden stairwell that's half-rotted, and exits onto the neighbor's property. That just doesn't work, okay? So, anything we would do to this property, one of the primary responsibilities that we have, especially with a childcare facility, is to bring this building up to code. In order to do that, we need to put, no matter what we do, we need to put a second stair in, we have to put an elevator in, in order to get access to the second floor. That would be required. So, what we're proposing to do, this is the view, as you would see it from the street, this is the existing garage under halfway, is we basically are putting a stairwell and an elevator in this particular corner, as far away, the elevator tower would be as far away from the northern neighbor as we could possibly get it, because that has the highest reach over the structure. We need a second means of egress, not only from the upper roof, but from the upper stairwell, dropping down to the main grade. So, volumetrically, when you look at these particular plans, don't focus on the finishes or anything like that, focus on the massing. And what we're doing with this particular variance is what I would consider and argue is the minimum that we can get by with in order to make this site work. I also think that this particular site works very well for your small area plan, because, oh, by the way, we're not requiring TIF financing, just wanted you to know that right now, okay? We're not asking for TIF financing, and we're giving and the getting, okay, and the same, and all in the same breath, just wanted to let you know that. So, this kind of a development makes a very, very substantial investment. And we've taken this sketch plan this far, but we wanted to make sure that we got the temperature of the planning commission on how you feel about this particular development. I've provided for you, I assume everybody received the report that I prepared. So, you have all the statistics on here, we have 132 children. But I wanted to call your attention to the sketch plan that's located right here. This particular plan, if you, if you look at that, I don't know if the camera can see that or not, but that particular plan shows the profile of the existing house from the house to the north with the roof line, and shows that our railing is just like a foot or two higher than the existing ridge line of that house, as you would see it from the north side. And then you see the elevator and stairwell tower on the left. So, two variances, a parking variance, and what I would consider to be a minimal height variance, and the rest can be developed to meet, substantially meet, the city's standards for the site. So, I would leave it at that and ask for your input, guidance, judgment, opinions.
Commissioner Schaus?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I can. Let's go back to... Oh, it's on that one? Okay, let's try that. Oh, okay. Yeah? Let's just scroll down.
I think you were, you were almost there.
Oh, wait.
You had the file open?
I'm in somebody else's. Here, that's it.
With lid?
Yeah.
So, I think that that's really impactful. Yeah.
So, what we did is we created a diagram that shows a lid. If we were to put a lid across the building at that magic height, only a tiny portion of this building actually is above that lid, that height limit. It's a little bit part of the lower part of the roof for the stairwell, and then the elevator penthouse, the part that has to project in order for an elevator to work. That's the no lid.
I don't see it with lid.
Well, anyway, I don't want to take, it's late, I don't want to take too much of your time, so I think, hopefully, you understand kind of where we're headed with this, so.
Commissioner Schaus?
Mr. Hill, is this an expansion? I mean, is the business to be considerably larger than currently? I mean...
Yes, so, our license would probably increase our capacity by about 52 children.
Increasing it by 252?
By 52. We're going from about 72 to, well, 132, so I guess it's 60 children.
That's a lot of moms and dads, which is, I'd be interested in hearing, especially Commissioner Lee, being on the Valley View Small Area Plan, I think this would be a wonderful opportunity for the whole, as a shopping district, too, I mean, to bring that many...
Yeah, we've been in this area for over 22 years, and so, we were really excited when this opportunity came up. And we're in a situation where that current building, it was a prior medical office building, but it's a really small footprint, there's a staircase right smack down the middle in that building, it's really limited our programming for expansion, and so, when this happened, we thought, let's...
So, you had been limited by space requirements in your old facility there?
Space and site requirements. That site has its own set of challenges, it drops off very significantly in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Hamilton?
Have you had a chance to talk with the developers, and have you seen the plans for the condominiums that are going on nearly adjacent to you?
Well, I haven't seen the plan specifically, but I have seen it under construction.
The point I would make is, I think you're a terrific attribute in the neighborhood. I can't imagine how delightful it would be as a parent to actually walk your kids to daycare. It just puts a smile on your face to think about it. However, the city, the developer, and the neighborhood has put enormous faith and trust in those new condominiums and the revitalization of that entire corner and what that means. It's a quite delightful, very expensive, very handsome new development. And I would ask, perhaps, that, since this is here, a sketch plan review, and your building is not yet skinned, that you might give some thought to what that new construction looks like, what it's made of, what its materials are, and how you might enjoy sharing the neighborhood together.
Oh, absolutely. That's why I said, don't focus on what the, what these images look like, as my draftsman, just sort of throwing stuff on there. I was more concerned about getting all the massing. We really had to spend a lot of time to figure out, just to make this work. It's such a tight site. We had to figure out that we could actually, you know, get our licensed capacity in there, that we could meet all the codes. We'll dress this pig any way we can. I want to make sure that you are conceptually okay with this as part of the neighborhood development.
But I think, at least for me, that's a big, and I think for you, too, that's a big part of the concept, that it be, that it meet the neighborhood in a friendly way and fit.
And we can make sense, I mean, we just finished a project on Grand Avenue, where we built it right into the community. It's like a brownstone home that we made look just like the neighborhood. I mean, we're very conscientious of that. I mean, clearly, we're, we want to make it work, so. Peter's good at that, that's what he gets paid for.
What you're telling me, John, is that the building's ugly, and let's do something about that. You can say it, it's okay, John. We've known each other long enough.
You haven't inherited a self-purse. You have inherited a sow's ear.
That's correct.
And it's going to take a great deal of effort to make it be more than it is right now.
That's correct.
Can you do that? Yes, and we'll see that next time. And I know the challenge is on the table, and I appreciate that one challenge was simply to make it fit. You've proven that you can make it fit. Now, can you make it wonderful? And that's the next challenge.
No problem.
Commissioner Nemra?
Well, thanks, yeah, you obviously know Commissioner Hamilton, great architect. I looked at your bio, it's in a, at the U of M, it's a fantastic bio. I'm not an architect, but I did look at your drawing on page four before the meeting, and the one that I think that you were holding up. And I think I get it, but I'm wondering if you could just, do in a non-architect way, you're trying to say that, look, even if you give us this height variance, the top of the building is just, just a little bit above the top of the neighbor's house, is that correct? And you were looking for an image, could you, like, just use your arms, like, in a non-architect manner, are you able to, like, estimate it's this much higher?
The, okay, according to that sketch, okay, the existing roof line of the office building is more or less approximate to the top of the house next door. In other words, those roof lines are, I can't tell you exactly how high that roof is, we've tried to, you know, Google Image it in to our elevations, and I think you have that on the set.
Mr. Hill, during this drawing, which of the lines shows the existing roof line?
Way down here, this dotted line.
The dotted line, that's the...
Okay, the blue dotted line. It's not blue on yours.
Yep.
Okay, that's the existing roof line. And then you're constructing, what, the stuff in the red dotted line, and then, is there something above that?
Yes, let me, let me see if I can, so, the existing roof line is right here, okay? So, the, what the neighbor's looking at is from, this is, this is his grade, okay? So, that's his dirt line. Our floor line is right down here at the bottom of that red box, okay? That's our, that's our existing floor elevation. So, half of that floor is below grade. This is the top, this line right here is the top of the existing second floor, that's where the roof trusses bear right now. We have to go up with a little bit of structure, and our floor line, our third floor line, is basically what you see right here, this line right here, all right? So, our actual railing, the safety rail, a five-foot-high railing that we put up on these playground areas to protect the children, is just a matter of a foot above the existing ridge line of the office building. So, that would be approximate to the height of the neighbor's roof. So, therefore, this portion in red, this little blue portion, which is not on the property line, but set farther back towards the front edge, is the part that's actually high. That's the elevator, that's, excuse me, this is the, this is the lobby, I misspoke. This is the portion that is housing the emergency stairwell and my access to that emergency stairwell, and then farther back, right back up here, is the elevator penthouse, the override on the elevator.
Okay, so, so, it's that last part where you were moving over with your finger, that's really the subject matter of the variance?
This right here, yes. That's correct. And so, then again, the question, because the ordinance calls for 24 feet, I believe, is on the site, the small area plan says three stories. Last I saw, you can't get three stories in 24 feet very easily, all right? So, there is a little bit of a conflict in the objective for this site, because it's a corner lot, so three stories has to have some height limit that goes with it, in order for that attribute of this site to be met. But what we're... But what we're really showing you is that, while we do have three stories, it's three stories from the street side, but it's really, you know, two stories from the neighbor's side.
Okay, thanks. I'll let the, I'll let other people come. I have a couple other questions, though. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, I was...
Jill Dunkley.
Sorry, Jill Dunkley. Jill Dunkley?
Okay, thank you. So you're going to be having, and thank you for coming in, you're going to be having 132 kids here with 22 parking places? And I suppose some of that will be staff. Will that be sufficient, say, at 7:45 in the morning, when parents are 5:10 at night and parents are dropping off and picking up?
Yes, you know, parents drop off and pick up in various times throughout the day. Our prime times are, say, 6:30 in the morning to about 8:39, and then 3:00 to 6:00 at night. So our staffing needs also correspond to our enrollment, so, you know, parents park for five, 10 minutes max in the morning, five, 10 minutes. So it's kind of a revolving door that way. We did do a traffic study, and the traffic study came back from the city of Edina that said 22 stalls were sufficient for the staffing and for 132 students. We also know that a number of our families have more than one child, so we have about 15% of our families, so that helps. We also know currently 17% of our staff take alternate transportation to the center. We anticipate that'll continue, especially with the development of the condominiums and, you know, the other housing. So, yeah, we think it's sufficient.
Okay, then one final question, and I'll yield the floor. Neighbors are going to be concerned about families coming out of your property and taking a right instead of taking a left and going to Valley View to exit the neighborhood. They're going to be concerned about people taking a right and going down the neighborhood street, particularly at evening rush hour. Is there anything you can do to minimize people going down, I can't remember, is this Oak Lawn? Instead of going out to Valley View, particularly at evening rush hour?
Well, part of, part of the challenge here is that when you look at the parking that's there existing today, it's a, it's a head-in parking into the old ice cream shop from that adjacent street. The building, the distance from the building to the curb line of the street is inadequate in order to get a separate driveway. There's just simply not enough room there. It's a, it's a historic condition is what I can basically describe it as. Luckily, that street has fairly low traffic. But I can tell you, and so I assume that traffic study has not been distributed?
No. It would be part of the formal application.
Okay. Well, when you get the formal application, the traffic study does talk about all the traffic impacts on all of the neighborhood streets, and it's fairly minimal.
Well, thank you very much. This was an attractive presentation, so thank you.
Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, for the staff that take alternate transportation, I mean, there's a bus line that runs along there. Is, are there any, maybe any bike facilities for staff to park at, or?
We'll put them in.
We'll put them in.
I should also mention that this particular plan does allow us to provide for some stormwater management, which today, virtually the entire site is paved or hard surface. So we do have the ability to meet some of those standards as well and satisfy the frogs. Thank you.
Shirley?
It's clear you put a lot of thought into this, and I'd say it's already gone way far beyond sketch plan, so I hope your heart isn't set on it. The reason I say that is, actually, I want to be honest, from the Wooddale Valley View perspective, many in the work group and the residents, I recall at the time, identified that building as one that was sore, a real eyesore, and beyond its, its life expectancy. So I have to ask the question, and I, I'm sure I, there's, there's some reasons for it, but why you chose to go this route rather than considering a tear-down and having the freedom to actually improve the situation, not work with so many constraints there?
Well, quite simply, it's somewhat codified in your ordinance that I don't have much choice. If I tear it down, I then have to meet the setbacks. I cannot meet the setbacks on this site. If I put a new building on, I would have such a small footprint in order to meet the ordinance. That means that none of the parking arrangements could work that are there today. I, this, this site is so small that it is completely impractical for us to do it. So we acquired this site initially because we could theoretically move in, granted, not with the same capacity, but we could move right into the facility. It already has a fire sprinkler line to it, the bones, in spite of what it looks like, 1957, are not that bad. It's adaptable. It needs a lot of attention, especially on the inside, but it's certainly adaptable. We've been able to demonstrate that that will actually work. And then third, when you talk about what we have to submit here for our sustainability guidelines, one of the top sustainability guidelines is in, is what you currently have, retaining what you have and reconditioning it. That's a primary goal. We've done that.
Okay. I would say that we've had plenty of submissions and very good solutions that, that were justified by a variance. We do understand, obviously, that there's some pre-existing conditions. I think I'd probably say 90% of the properties in Edina have some pre-existing conditions that no longer meet the setbacks. So I guess I would just put that out there. I mean, you're an architect and you're a problem solver. Sometimes I think we do get into a mindset that we can only see what's there and how to solve the immediate needs there. But I also understand there's financial constraints. But I will put a plug in for, there is a new building going across the street. I think you, you obviously want the best possible space for the kids, that lower level doesn't appear to be a, I don't know if you're planning on putting classrooms down there, but I think in terms of light and circulation and optimum use of the site and best ways of egress, I think the unprotected, long exterior runs of stairs is, is going to be an issue. I'm not sure that that, maybe code-wise it works, but something about that, I think, just is, is a little problematic. So I don't know if you're trying too hard to work with what you have to make it work and then end up with sort of a, mm, okay, but still not the best functioning when you, when you might have an opportunity, if you're purchasing, purchasing, purchasing this for a long term and going to own it, you know, make it what you really, really need it to be.
Yeah. I have thought about it, but I appreciate your concern. What it would probably end up being is, in order for me to get 22 parking stalls on this site and meet everything else, I'd have to put, I'd have to raise the building up, and I'd build, be building a deck over the site in order to make this work. That doesn't have a very good street sense to me, you know? So, and by the way, the spaces that are in the back, the back of the building, actually along the dirt edge on the north side, was the childcare center for many, many years, was on that side. Well, that's primarily where our infants are going to be located. They don't have as much of a, of a light need at the, at that point. All of our younger kids are being exposed much more to the light and the air and so forth. Staff lounge, some kitchen.
It's, it's, it's non-functional, kitchen, you know?
Yeah, we definitely...
We can think about all of those things.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Commissioner Bennett?
I'm full of comments today. Woo-hoo! Anyways, I'm just getting crazy. So, I mean, this, what I'm looking at compared to what is currently there is definitely an improvement. I know New Horizon prides itself with its bright blue, I don't know, branding. Maybe consider softening that up and keep it to a logo, to just kind of blend in with what Commissioner Hamilton said, because there's a similar development happening on either sides of you, from Valley View, so it'll look, might look really nice blending in with that. Okay, a couple other things. The infiltration base, and that's kind of tentatively planned for the middle, I'm assuming you'd have some sort of programming in that, like a rain garden, but at least other things that are occurring along Valley View at corners are, you know, pieces of art or some sort of thing. So maybe consider filling that space with something aesthetically pleasing, too. And we talked about just an educational piece onsite somewhere as people are walking along, mostly for pedestrians, and the fact that this is like an early childhood education center, maybe there'd be something you could put to help just educate people walking by, maybe something sustainable you're doing onsite. And regarding the parking, which is part of the variance, I, well, I'm not worried here, unfortunately. It might spill up, up along the neighboring street, but there is room for that. This isn't a standalone development where you have like a four-lane road right outside of it and there's just nowhere else for someone to park if it gets too busy. And so I think, you know, if parents have to, you know, when it gets really busy, use some on-street parking, you know, they'll find it. And the height I do not see as an issue or an imposition, except perhaps on the north side where the kids could just be looking down into the neighbor's backyard or something, consider maybe veiling that a little better with plantings or something.
Actually, we do do that. We don't have a, we have a...
You do do that, or you do that?
No, no. We partially have a solid fence.
Okay.
There's only a portion of it that's, so it's not, they don't have a, what we're proposing is that it's solid up to, you know, about this high, and then the rest of the five feet is, is, you know, a regular picket-type fence.
And I'm, I'm a huge proponent of the reuse and rehab and how creative you have to get to make that work, and so with the height variance, I'm much more comfortable with that. Thank you.
To final comments, I kind of agree with what Commissioner Bennett just said, and Commissioner Hamilton, I also agree. I like reusing it. And I also want, when you come back, to have it blend with the other development and not have it this, I know you, we keep, you're regretting that you showed that blue, that big blue, but, you know, don't come back with that big blue.
Oh, nuts!
But I'm just always excited to see a daycare that's not on a highway, so, you know?
Well, and we've been here for so long, it's just, you know, I think it's natural.
I drive by that and I forgot that that was even, you know, a daycare right there, so, yeah, it'd be great to have you stay in the neighborhood because clearly it works at that location, and I think that's an excellent opportunity.
And one, one extra side comment, too, just about the exposed play areas for the children. It's, you know, kind of opposite a town hall station, but it is a way to kind of activate that street with, you know, kids playing. And I've, I've seen these done before, and I know people who live by them and are really good fans and, or fans of it and pleasant neighbors, so.
And it's also on the roof. We've done a number of rooftop playgrounds now around town, and there's actually one nearby. I think it's in your report, the Casa de Sol, or whatever, same, same kind of a plan. Theirs is even actually a little higher than what we're proposing here, so.
Commissioner Moran? So is there, if, okay, so some of your staff drive, do you get many people carting their kids on a cargo bike or something there?
We do. We do. We have some neighbors, or we have some families right now that do take strollers and walk to childcare. Sorry. I didn't realize it. But yes, we do. I don't know the percentage right now. I mean, I clearly anticipate as the years go on, it'll only continue to increase because, especially with the housing developments that are being created right in the middle or will be right in the middle of those. We also, I mean, a lot of our staff now, honestly, they take Uber and Lyft because it's a lot less expensive than maintaining a car and car insurance and you name it, besides just, you know, mass transportation, so it'll just continue to get more and more creative.
So the, I guess the only thing I recommend, if you could, is to make it as easy, if not easier, to walk up or bike up to the front door as it is to park, you know?
That is one of our objectives.
Okay, great, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
All right, so next is correspondence and petitions. Moving on from there. Petition. Let's do it. So Chair, member comments, any updates, any? Commissioner Bennett, any comments?
Yeah, well, Mr. Nundorf covered the one that 4,500 would get approved by the council. With, I think, a few conditions. Just FYI.
Yeah. Any other updates?
Yeah, 50th and France, third community meeting will be Tuesday, October 23 at 7:00 at the Public Works Building. This will be where we'll present our, you know, our final plan and let the public give us their response.
That's been on the schedule.
That is on the schedule. I'm only announcing it tonight because this is our last planning commission meeting before that.
Anything else? Any other? Commissioner Lee?
And Greater Southdale got rescheduled, something, something got rescheduled? The, the public meeting?
We're not having the meeting tomorrow night.
No, I was thinking that public, didn't, I thought I saw a city announcement, but I can't remember the date. I thought we just announced it. But there was a public outreach meeting, community meeting for the Southdale work group that got postponed, and there's a new date? No? You guys don't know?
I don't know what the new date is.
There is not a new date, so.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought there was.
No.
No. Okay, I'm sorry. Maybe it was 50th and France I was thinking. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Good, I was going to say, I didn't know about that. All right, staff comments, anything? Carrie?
Just that we won't have a Southdale work group meeting this Thursday, but we will a week from Thursday, at the Public Works at 6:30.
I have a comment as well. On next Tuesday, we're having a work session with the City Council before their City Council meeting, and it's going to be the 70th and KL Small Area Plan and 50th and France Plan, Small Area Plans update, so the chairs and anyone else who wants to join in can come. It's at 5:30.
Chris, is that a presentation, an update from the consulting team?
And if the chairs wish to come and share as well, yes, it's an update.
It's an update. Okay, thanks.
Do they get the whole time, or is there six, six other items?
No, they're, they're at the beginning, but we have other items. They get half the session.
Okay. A motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
Second, second, second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we've got the, before everyone starts standing up, I think, let's just agree we're not going to have the second work session, or do we want? Okay, right, we're done. We're not going to do that. Should we, do we want to reschedule? What do you want to do, the fact that we're not covering those?
We could reschedule. You could send us comments if you have specific, if you don't think we need to reconvene, you can send, I guess it's really up to you.
Okay.
Arts and Culture Law stuff.
Okay.
Yep.
So let's just, let's just send comments, and do you, what, do you need them by a certain date?
No, not at all. These are finished, finished documents, finished work that the commissions are now, they, they've already reviewed it, it's been redrafted, they've approved it, so now they're, they're done with their work, they are giving it to you as a final piece. It will be integrated in with the larger comp plan document, and you'll, they'll have to have some cross-referencing. But it wouldn't, there's no presentation that's going to occur for each individual chapter for the ones that are not required by the Met Council, so if you have comments, you can just send them probably directly to Bill.
Well, I do think we need to, we are going to have to discuss at least some of them. Just, what, what's next? Our next meeting would be 5:30, two weeks from now. What's on the agenda for that?
Maybe some more land use, some...
Actually, 70th and K...
This was, we had a tremendous amount of paper to get through for this meeting.
Further your regular meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
What do you forecast in two weeks?
Another, another big one. Another, another big one. And we do need to continue our land use discussion, so we may want to talk about scheduling a whole separate night to get together.
Agree. We keep, we keep kind of giving her the short stick. All right, so we've agreed that we'll just make comments and...